First Housing Authority, then City Council Meeting for today, July 1st, 2025. First, I will call to order the Arvada Housing Authority Meeting. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call?
Chairperson Simpson.
Here.
Chairperson Mooreman.
Here.
Commissioner Ambrose.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Pfeiffer.
Here.
Commissioner Marriott.
Here.
Commissioner Wilber.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval for the January 6th, 2025 Housing Authority Special Meeting Minutes. Are there any edits or corrections to the record? Seeing none, those stand approved. And now, we welcome public comment. This is three minutes for items specifically related to Housing Authority only, not related to other items for this evening's agenda. Is there anyone here to speak on the Housing Authority meeting? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And we have reports from the Secretary? Ms. Espinoza, do you have any reports?
No, just new business.
Okay, thank you. And we have no reports of committees or unfinished business then, so we'll move into new business. Ms. Espinoza, we're going to open Arvada Housing Authority 2025 Administrative Plan Updates.
Thank you, Chairperson Simpson and Commissioners. The Housing Authority must ensure compliance with federal laws, regulations, and notices, and must establish policy procedures to clarify federal requirements and to ensure consistency in Housing Choice Voucher Program operation. The Arvada Housing Authority Housing Choice Voucher Program Administrative Plan contains these policies and procedures. In 2016, the Housing Opportunity Through Modernization Act was passed that made significant changes to the Housing Choice Voucher Program, including income and asset calculation methods, asset limits, and clarifying income review processes. HUD finalized this rulemaking in 2023 and set deadlines for public housing authorities to implement new policies and procedures. The majority of the updates to the administrative plan were made to ensure compliance with these new mandates. A summary of the proposed changes was included in your packet, and I recommend that the Board approve the 2025 Administrative Plan Updates.
Thank you. I'll accept a motion from the -- oh, public comment. Is there anyone here to speak -- public comment on this particular hearing item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, and I will accept a motion from the Council? Councilmember Ambrose -- or, sorry, Commissioner Ambrose.
Mayor, is it normal procedures to ask the Secretary questions about the report at this time?
You may, absolutely.
Okay. So, one of the things I noticed in the report is that you are anticipating a shortfall of $925,000. Is that correct?
Yes, and that will fall under the third agenda item.
Okay, so I'll wait until then.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Espinoza, for answering my questions today. I know that they were numerous and kind of at the last second, but I do appreciate that you answer them in a timely manner. Thank you very much. So, I moved that the -- can I see that? Yeah. I moved that the Arvada Housing Authority 2025 Administrative Plan Updates be approved.
Thank you. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero from the Commission. Next, we will open Arvada Housing Authority 2026 Annual Plan.
The Arvada Housing Authority must submit a five-year PHA plan once every fifth Housing Authority fiscal year and an annual plan every year. The plan informs HUD, residents, and the public of strategies that address the needs of the people served through the programs. The five-year plan describes the Housing Authority's mission, goals, and objectives, and the annual plan covers policies and procedures. Last year, HUD approved the Housing Authority's 2025 through 2029 PHA plan. It is now time for the Housing Authority to submit its 2026 plan. The housing team has drafted the Arvada Housing Authority 2026 Annual Plan for Board Approval. The plan supports the vision and the housing strategies outlined in the Arvada Housing Strategic Plan. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have and recommend the Board approve the annual plan.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this particular Housing Authority item? Seeing none. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Mooreman.
I'd like to make the motion.
All yours.
I move that the Arvada Housing Authority 2026 Annual Plan be approved.
Thank you. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Final item, Ms. Espinoza.
Thank you. The final item on the agenda is the Housing Authority Annual Report from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. And before I dive into the report, I first want to thank Jessie Balters, the CED Communications Manager, Steve Milkie, the Creative Services Designer, Arvada Media Services, and Dina Cody, the Housing Choice Voucher Program Supervisor, for their contributions to the report. It is an undertaking, and I appreciate all that they do. As I mentioned, this report describes the activities and accomplishments of the Housing Authority from July 1st through July 30th, 2025. This first page discusses the following types of rental assistance that the Housing Authority offers. We offer Housing Choice vouchers, which help people afford units on the private market. We offer project-based vouchers where rental assistance is tied to a specific development, such as Vance -- yeah, Vance Street Flats and Ralston Gardens, and mainstream vouchers, which assist non-elderly persons with disabilities who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. Who we serve? The demographics from last year to this year have not changed much. We did see an increase in the amount of rental assistance we paid during that one-year period. We spent just over $8.9 million in rental assistance that covered 537 households. We saw an increase in our average per-unit cost. Last year, it was $1,221, and it increased to $1,406 this year. We are celebrating one year of a successful project-based voucher program. We committed our first seven project-based vouchers to Vance Street Flats when it opened in March of 2024. This was a new endeavor for us. And we contributed an additional eight vouchers to Ralston Gardens when it opened in October of 2024. And what makes the project-based voucher program so successful is that it matches rental assistance with supportive services. So, the city's housing navigator, Alexa Ursetta, she meets with the residents in these PBV units on a regular basis, and she helps them with a variety of services that you can see in the report, such as budgeting, bank accounts, helping to establish payment plans if someone's struggling with credit. She offers all of these services because we want to make sure that we -- there's a lot of work involved in getting someone housed, but we want to make sure that people remain housed. And we're seeing a lot of good -- a good response from the participants in those project-based vouchers based on those services paired with rental assistance. So, we're very proud of this program. As far as the affordable housing development pipeline, we continue to support the development and preservation of affordable housing. And the report has featured Cornerstone Legacy Senior Residences. That's the property off of 64th and Sheridan. That is -- we were initially told that that was going to open in July or August of this year. They're now expecting it to open in September, so that will offer affordable housing to seniors. The Habitat for Humanity Griffith Station Project off of 52nd and Carr Street, that will offer 24 sale townhomes. And that opening date is to be determined, but I spoke with the developer earlier this morning, and they're anticipating groundbreaking in late August. Marshall Street Landing, that is the Family Tree Project, that will bring 85 units of permanent supportive housing, which we're very excited about, near the 55th and Marshall Street site. They are opening very soon. We're anticipating July, August for that opening. And Marshall Point Apartments is -- will be off of 52nd and Marshall Street. They just had their groundbreaking ceremony last month. That will be 260 units in that area, so we're very excited about those projects. As far as our budget outlook for 2025, I believe there was an update in a recent Friday memo to Council that introduced the budget shortfall that we are projecting in 2025. There are two primary factors related to this budget shortfall. The first is that the formula used by HUD involved an inflation factor that is dependent on an increase in fair market rents. The fair market rents published in October of 2024 did not increase, and which means for us that we did not see that much of an increase in our budget for 2025, as we have seen in prior years. So, although HUD stated that the FMRs indicate that the rents are stabilizing in the area, we have not seen that yet. The rents that we see coming in, they still continue to climb. So, while HUD is saying that they're stabilizing, we're not seeing that. So, what we have is a situation where our budget kind of fell flat. It's where it's at, but our costs continue to increase, which put us in a shortfall situation. At this time, we are projecting about a $925,000 budget shortfall come 2025 -- or December 2025. We are closely working with our local HUD office and the HUD shortfall prevention teams to determine what those next steps are. There was an opportunity earlier in June to apply for additional funding from HUD, and we have done so, and we have been successful in receiving additional funding in the past. But HUD has stated that they are anticipating funding cuts in the near future, and they are telling housing authorities to take steps to decrease the overall number of families that we serve. So, we are in conversation with HUD as far as what that might look like. But we are optimistic that we will receive additional funding. We won't know for the next couple of months, I would say, but based on those decisions, then we'll decide what we need to do to prepare for this potential shortfall. So, we will continue to meet with HUD, we'll monitor our spending, and I will keep the Board informed as far as how our budget situation is developing over time. Also on this page, it talks about the need for rental assistance that it remains high. In January 2025, when we opened our waitlist for applications, we received just over 3,000 applications. Unfortunately, we cannot pull anyone off the waitlist now based on our budget situation, so people will sit there for a bit. And as far as the project-based voucher waitlist, that did open up in 2023, and we received around 900 applications at that time. Recommended activities over the next year includes efficient operation of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Of course, we will closely monitor the federal budget to see what plays out there. The Housing Authority will continue to support the Arvada Housing Strategic Plan Strategy Implementation. We will explore new opportunities for funding and partnerships, and we will adopt the new federal mandates outlined in both the Housing Opportunities Through Modernization Act of 2016 and the National Standards for the Physical Inspection of Real Estate, which is our new inspection standard. So, we'll be rolling out both of those in the next few months. And that brings us to the end of the report, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you. First, I will accept any public comment on this hearing item? Seeing none, Council -- Commissioner Ambrose.
Thank you for this report. Can you explain to me the difference between an HCV and the PBV? The Housing Choice Voucher and the Project-Based Voucher?
So, the Housing Choice vouchers are assigned to a tenant, so the resident can take that voucher and find any place in the community that they want to rent and use that voucher there. The project-based vouchers are assigned to a specific development. So, in our case, they're assigned to Vance Street Flats, they're assigned to Ralston Gardens, and they're specific units in those communities where those vouchers are used.
Okay. I just got a little confused because you said there's 264 families on the waitlist, and I don't imagine they're on the waitlist for the project-based vouchers. They're on the waitlist for the Housing Choice vouchers, right?
There -- we maintain two separate lists. So, there is a list for the project-based units because those units are set aside for people who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. And so, you have to have those meet that criteria in order to be eligible for those units. For the larger waitlist, the HCV list, anyone can apply for that list. We do offer preferences for persons who have disabilities, persons who are experiencing homelessness. So, we do offer preferences for that list as well, but if you don't meet the preferences, you could still apply.
Okay. Thank you. And then, my next question is on reducing the folks who would get assistance, that -- reducing 55 households. So, would that eliminate people who are currently receiving assistance, or would that just be like, as people, I don't know, graduate, that you don't reopen it?
Worst-case scenario is that we would look at terminating assistance for 55 households. That's the worst-case scenario. We're trying to take steps in between to make sure that that doesn't happen. We -- hopefully, the additional funding will come through. We do have turnover each month, and that changes, but on average, we have three to four households leave per month. And so, as those vouchers become available, we won't be reissuing those to new folks. So, we do have people who transfer their vouchers out, and so the new Housing Authority might absorb their costs. So, we're having conversations with landlords, potentially about not increasing rents for a bit. We are asking other housing authorities, when people transfer, for them to absorb those costs. So, we're trying a variety of methods here to reduce our costs, so we don't have to terminate assistance to anyone.
Okay. And then, when you were talking about who you serve in that infographic, you said that it's $1,406 average per-unit cost. Is that annually or monthly?
Monthly.
Monthly.
That's what the Housing Authority pays on average per household.
So, for those 55 households, that's a savings of about $77,000 a month?
$77,000 a month?
A year.
A year.
No, if she says the 14 --
Oh, we mean aggregate.
Aggregate, okay, thank you.
Right, yeah. Okay, because I was curious about, you know, if that was $14,000 or $1,400 monthly or in a year, because I was like, it's only a year, then 55 families, it's not going to make that big of a reduction. But since it's a monthly $77,000 for 55 families, then that would make up about how much of that shortfall, of that $925,000 shortfall?
That would be -- cover the majority of it.
Okay. So, you wouldn't make any other changes to the programs? It would all be of not offering or potentially kicking people off of the program?
Yes.
And the program is completely funded by HUD? There's no other -- like, does the city do a matching, or the state does something or nothing? It's all federal dollars?
It's all federal.
Okay. And so, when you're looking to meet the shortfall, what are the restrictions of accepting income or getting income from other sources to meet the shortfall? Or is it like there's federal restrictions on how you can plug the gap? Because it sounds like the federal government is saying, just don't help as many people. But are there other ways to plug this, like if we wanted to have a match or a bake sale? I don't know. Like, how could we meet this funding gap?
There's no federal restrictions from using other sources to fill the gap. I would say at this point, let's see what we can get from HUD to fill the gap. According to our local office, so a bit more background about the shortfall, there's a large number of housing authorities in the Denver metro area who are in the same situation that we are. We are hearing feedback that our budget deficit is minor compared to what other housing authorities are experiencing. So, we're feeling good that if we come in with a lower request, that hopefully that will increase our funding. However, there's no restrictions on what we can use to help fill the gap.
Okay. And if these 55 families or households do not receive the funding, what is your opinion about their likelihood of becoming homeless?
I think it's high. I think most of them would be evicted.
And would you say, per household, on average, how many people are in per household?
Most are -- they are -- there's a large majority of singles and two-bedroom units are -- one- and two-bedroom units are typically what we fill.
So, between one to three people?
Mm-hmm, yes. The majority are -- we do have a high number of elderly and disabled compared to other housing authorities, so that is a concern to us, is that we tend to house people on very limited incomes, which making -- that would make their options even more restricted.
Right. Yeah, because they are, on average, making $16,000 a year in income.
Correct.
Right. Okay, yeah, I hope that the landlords you talk to have some -- something we can work with, like maybe working with Brothers Redevelopment of fixing up their place in exchange for a rent break or something like that, so that we can keep people housed.
Yeah, the landlords so far have been receptive. They're understanding there we're not the only ones in this situation. So, so far, the conversations have been going well.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pfeiffer.
Great questions, Commissioner Ambrose. This is the program that I talk highly about, that we should invest in. It's proven success, and for a few dollars, it has a huge impact on families and individuals. You know, I think you should go through your process, trying to figure out, you know, through attrition, that maybe some of those can come down through attrition. But when it gets to the point where you've done as much as you can by seeing what HUD gives us, what the homeowners are saying, or the landowners are saying, and then, I just want to make sure we have a conversation before you make a decision.
Absolutely.
Because I think it, you know, sooner is better than later, but I think if we give it the next 90 days or so, we should probably revisit this and see where you're at. Because this completely goes against what this Council's been trying to do. This is the one area that I feel is the most impactful when you talk about homeless or soon-to-be unhoused. If this program goes away, this is the thin line between home -- having a home and not. And this is where we have to focus all of our attention in my eyes to stop this. And now, there's a possible of minimum 55 people that could be homeless. And so, I want to lean into this in a few months and see where we're at and see what you can do, and then let the Council have a -- or the Commission have a conversation before any action is made, if the Commission is all right with that as well.
I concur, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Thank you. That's all. Good job.
Thank you. And so, Chairperson Simpson, I may reach out to you in about 90 days to schedule a special meeting for the Housing Authority?
That would be great.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mooreman.
I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Pfeiffer. I think this is an urgent matter, and I appreciate your leadership on this and bringing this attention to us. And let's stay on top of this and make sure that you do come back to us so that we can be as helpful as we can to resolving this. So, thank you for that, and we can't have 55 families go homeless, so we need to do something. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Commissioner Marriott.
Let me ask you a couple of questions. I want to start off with the Section 8 voucher program, the Housing Choice vouchers. My understanding is the tenants pay a portion and the voucher pays a portion?
That's correct.
Okay. So, how often do you reevaluate the portion, the proportionality of the total rent payment?
On an annual basis.
Annually, okay. And so, is that part of your calculus of trying to come up with this shortfall? Are you doing any looks at the proportions of that? Or is that a federal mandate? You know, the split is a federal mandate, or is there any?
It's statutory. We don't have any discretion to adjust those percentages.
And when you say annual basis, do you do it on a calendar-year basis, or annually based on the person, when they achieve their Housing Choice voucher?
It's based on when they initially leased at the property. It's 12 months from there.
It's ongoing all the time?
Yes.
Okay. And how often does that, reevaluating the financial split, yield the tenant paying more and the housing voucher being less versus the other way around?
That's a hard question to answer. Yeah, okay. It depends. So, for folks on social security, the limited income, there will be a minor increase in what they pay. It's not significant. It's not going to address the shortfall that we receive. We do have people who go from not having much income at all to getting full-time employment. That happens. We have the opposite, where someone might be fully employed, event happens in their life, and they lose their job. And so, we have all of that happening, and so it's hard to pinpoint how often it -- someone's annual recertification might result in an increase. It just depends on their situation at that time.
Do you annually ever look at, like, the total rent paid and then the breakout of the split, you know, the voucher versus the tenant paying? Do you ever look at that? Like, I think that would be interesting data to know and probably to track from year to year, and would be simple.
Sure, we do look at that every year. And again, it's -- just because someone might have a source of income right now, it doesn't guarantee that they're going to have it in the following year, but--
I guess I'm not talking about on an individual level. I'm talking about cumulatively.
Sure.
So, you've got hundreds of vouchers, and all the hundreds of vouchers yield a certain, you know, total dollar in rent, and a certain amount of that is paid by the vouchers, a certain amount is paid by the tenants, and from year to year, what's the trend look like there? What -- how does it -- how does it -- I mean, it would be extremely valuable in forecasting how you're going to run this plan. I would guess you have that.
Yes, we do look at that on an annual basis. It also plays -- there's so many factors that are involved in that as well, because if -- during a year where we are able to issue vouchers, although we have people who are -- they may -- we might see an increase in people who are experiencing an increase in what they pay, we may be -- that may be at the same time where we are leasing up some of the PBV vouchers, where people are coming in with lower incomes and can help and offset some of that. So, we are forecasting in a variety of areas. We do have the cornerstone units that we'll be leasing up in August. We do have HUD's permission to go ahead and lease those units. So, fortunately, the budget predicament that we're in will not prevent us from leasing at Cornerstone and filling those units. But again, we have -- we're going to anticipate that the folks that are filling those units will be coming in at a lesser income. So, we're -- we are looking at this all the time.
Okay. Maybe you could provide that for us sometime, just as--
Sure.
-- interest on our part. The second couple of questions I want to ask you about is about the project-based vouchers. So, you have issued 15 of those so far?
Yes.
Okay, and you're about to issue more?
Yes.
How many more?
Eight.
Eight more. So, that'll be 23. So, how many ultimately are you trying to issue? What's the plan?
The plan at this time is that we will offer more vouchers to Marshall Point when those units are complete, and we don't have any additional vouchers allocated at this time.
Okay. So, who -- how do you decide, you know, that somebody gets project-based vouchers and somebody doesn't?
The developer will come in and request vouchers, and we evaluate whether it's a good match or not. We do bring it to the Board for approval.
Okay. And who's the beneficiary of that? You know, like a project-based voucher program, it's got to have, you know, everything's got winners and losers. Who's the winners and who's the losers there?
I would say that we're -- that there's a number of winners there. I think the Housing Authority wins because we're able to place someone who is at the 30% AMI level or below in one of those units. The tenant obviously benefits through the services and the rental assistance. The developer wins because they're able to charge a fair market rent, potentially for that unit, because the Housing Authority is involved. But they are also getting the Housing Authority's involvement through the navigation services that are offered to. We do offer those services to other residents as well.
Okay.
So, I would say the whole community wins in that situation.
And comes at a cost to who?
At a cost?
Like, the -- I guess what I'm trying to ask you is, does having project-based vouchers take away the Housing Choice vouchers? It's one pool of money, and so segregating it into two different programs, one program gets bigger, the other one has to get smaller? Or am I wrong about that?
It does get smaller. It does get smaller, sure.
Okay. So, the Housing Choice voucher program is -- loses some money when the project-based program grows? Is that fair?
It is, but it is one large bucket. We can just choose whether the tenant gets to choose their unit or if they're going into-- to choose their unit, or if they're going into a unit that is selected for them.
Right. So if a tenant's getting a voucher anyway, whether they choose or you choose for them, they're kind of the same either way?
Yes.
But the developer does good, because they get a unit filled that they want?
And the housing authority's involved, and the landlords appreciate that, because they have somebody to call in need, if they're in need.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rupert.
Thank you, thank you for your report. I gather, one, that there's no opportunity to appeal HUD's decision that rent rates are flat, clearly in an economy, and in an area where rent rates are not flat, but there's no opportunity to appeal that?
No, we had that discussion with our rep, and...
Yeah, no doubt. HUD is cutting the fifty-five families, have they given any, is there a demographic that they're asking us to target, or is it just, hey, we're cutting your money, you figure it out?
It's, the housing authority needs to figure it out.
How about efficiencies within our housing authority? We've gone back and forth, having automated payments to landlords, we've done, we're back to now mailing checks. Are there opportunities for us to create efficiencies operationally, so that we can perhaps save a couple of residents and their homes?
I think we're about as efficient as we can be. We did reopen the direct deposit program, so that is open to landlords who do want to participate in that. I think we have done absolutely everything that we can to meet HUD's requirements with the limited staffing that we do have. I think it's more so on the, it's a conversation with the landlords, it's, what are some of the other cost-saving measures? Can you think of what those might be that HUD has talked to us about? In the past, when we have had transfers come into us, we've had the option of billing the other housing authority, or absorbing the cost into our own program. We don't absorb any costs, we haven't for quite a while, because we wanted to conserve our budget. We have looked at everything, and we have gone through the cost-saving measures with our HUD reps, to see if there's any room. We're not finding a whole lot at this time.
Okay, thank you.
But we're open, if anyone has ideas, we're open to it.
Commissioner Ambrose.
Thank you. With the fifty-seven percent of the people that we're serving, do you find that those folks find a full-time job and can graduate out of this program?
The fifty-seven percent of the elderly persons?
Mm-hmm. Okay. What about the fifty-three percent that we're serving, that are people who are disabled? Do they find work sometimes, and...
Sometimes. I would also say that I think that that percentage is low. That percentage is based on the number of people who meet the social security definition of disability. I think we have more people based in our program that don't necessarily meet the social security definition in order to receive benefits, but there might be some limitations there in terms of what they can secure for employment.
Okay, so we have about two-thirds of the population who, I mean, just on, based on elderly alone, who are, you know, they're retired, they're not going to get full-time pay, and figure out a way to get off this program, right?
In most cases, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to ask that, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marriott.
Yeah, one other question. How many, are all of our housing choice vouchers used within the city limits of Arvada?
No. We do have an intergovernmental agreement with Foothills Regional Housing, so we can house within Foothills jurisdiction, which is Jefferson County, with the exception of Lakewood. We don't have an intergovernmental agreement with Metro Housing Solutions, so we cannot house anyone in Lakewood.
Okay. So of the housing choice vouchers that we provide, what percentage of those are used outside of the city limits of Arvada? Just roughly?
About a third.
About a third, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ambrose.
Sorry, I just thought of one more question or program to look to. Have you, especially for the elderly population, have you heard of, like, home share programs?
Like sunshine home share, or...
Yeah, where, where, like, so, like, lots of, because I was also looking at your demographics, that seventy-three percent are female head of household, are staying there alone, so a lot of people, when they're retiring, instead of, like, retiring to an individual apartment, in a housing, in a housing development, or in a nursing home, are, you know, four of them are buying a house together, and doing a house share. Or there might be a family whose grandparents aren't here, and they have an extra room, and so they'd be willing to do a home share, and it would be cheaper, it wouldn't be a typical landlord arrangement, and it helps people feel more connected to the community, because they're around young people, instead of just being around their own age demographic. So I was wondering if you had looked into home shares, and if that, if that could be a possibility?
Home shares using a housing voucher is difficult, because HUD does not allow for roommates.
Okay.
There, it, I don't want to get too into the weeds with it, but we would have to, the calculations there have become a bit complex, to where it's not that advantageous for someone to be in our program with a roommate. So that is a difficulty. If someone, at the point that we do need to terminate housing for someone, we might, that might be a recommendation that we have, and we can certainly look into those opportunities for folks, if we need to.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rupert.
Thank you, I just have a follow-up to Mr. Marriott's question. You said a third, roughly, of our vouchers are being utilized outside our city limits and broader Jeffco. Is that because a lack of availability of housing within our city limits that accommodate that level of housing? Is that a reasonable assumption?
Yeah, I think it's more so preference than anything. We, we have been successful in helping people find units if they want to live in a particular area, so if someone truly wants to use their voucher in Arvada, our housing navigator is successful at helping them secure units. We haven't encountered some of the difficulties securing units that other housing authorities report.
So we find housing for them elsewhere outside of our limits, and we don't transfer the vouchers out to another jurisdictions, a program?
Depending on where they go, but if they do stay within Jefferson County, except for Lakewood, we'll keep them.
Gotcha.
But if they transfer to Denver, Aurora, we will transfer their voucher.
All right, thanks.
And likewise, if one of theirs transfers in, it's a mutual exchange?
It is.
Okay.
Yes. And we cannot stop someone from transferring, that's just, it's not an option.
Commissioner Davis, you haven't gotten to go yet.
Yes, so just following on to Commissioner Rupert, do you find that people are moving to areas to be closer to work because of transportation issues, or family, because they have more support? Why are they moving outside of Arvada?
Dina, feel free to jump in if need be. My experience from talking with people is, they want to be around support, so, and also medical facilities is another reason, so for some, for someone who is elderly, or a person with a disability, being close to those facilities is important to them. Do you have anything you would add? Yeah.
That's another conversation. Commissioner Ambrose.
Yeah, our, we were just side-chatting that it makes sense, because there aren't a lot of medical facilities for people with chronic conditions, that elderly will all find ourselves in. The other question I have is for the housing that's outside of Arvada, is it cheaper or more expensive, or it just evens out?
It's pretty much the same.
Okay.
I see no additional lights, I will accept a motion from the commission. Commissioner Ambrose.
I move that the 2024-2025 Arvada Housing Authority Annual Report be approved.
All votes are cast, that passes seven to zero. Thank you very, very much, Mrs. Spinoza, I know this was a lot of work to pull together, and we really appreciate you.
Appreciate it, thank you. And we do have copies of the report for all the commissioners, we'll leave those with Kristen.
Thank you very much. Will those be available online for, thank you. All right, with that, there is no additional business, I will close the Arvada Housing Authority agenda, and I will bring in, I will call us to order for the Arvada City Council Meeting for today, July first, 2025. I will call upon Mayor Pro Tim Mormon for a moment of reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor, please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now, please rise if you are able, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call again.
Mayor Simpson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Rupert?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the amendments for June seventeenth, 2025. Are there any corrections or additions to the amendments? Seeing none, those stand approved. We have one proclamation tonight, Councilmember Marriott will be presenting the proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, and I believe our very good friends from Apex are here to accept this proclamation.
I'd like to...
And Ryan.
I'd like to ask Ryan Stevenson and any of your team, as well as the folks from Apex, to come on down to the podium, and I will be happy to read this proclamation about Parks and Recreation. So whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the city of Arvada, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas the city of Arvada and the Apex Parks and Rec District have built a strong and enduring partnership to provide essential Parks and Recreation services, and enhance the quality of life for all residents. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, that July 2025 be designated as Parks and Recreation Month, and encourage all community members to reflect on the indispensable role Parks and recreational, recreational professionals play in creating and maintaining a vibrant community. And I will bring this down, and if someone would like to say a few words after I bring it down, I'd appreciate that.
All right, I think I get the privilege here, I better make sure, I will break it there, I don't want to do that. Good evening, mayor and council members. July is Parks and Recreation Month, a time to celebrate the essential role that parks, open spaces, and recreation play in the health and vitality of our communities. Here in Arvada, we're fortunate to have a strong and growing Parks and Recreation system that brings people together, promotes wellness, and enhances quality of life. Our Parks and Recreation, our Parks and Programs support everything from youth development and environmental stewardship, to mental health and community resilience. Much of this success is thanks to our outstanding partnership with, between the city of Arvada and Apex Park and Recreation District. Apex provides exceptional recreation programming, fitness opportunities, and access to indoor and outdoor facilities that complement the city's work in managing our parks, our trails, and our natural areas. Together, we ensure that every resident has opportunities to play, grow, and connect, regardless of age, ability, or background. This July also marks another important community tradition, Arvada's annual Fourth of July fireworks display. This year's celebration will be held at Stinger Sports Complex, with food trucks beginning at 5:30, gates opening at 6:30, and fireworks scheduled for approximately 9:15 PM. Supported by city staff and community partners, this event is a shining example of how parks and recreation bring people together. It reflects our shared commitment to creating safe, inclusive, and memorable experiences for all. As we celebrate Parks and Recreation Month, and we, and as we gather to honor Independence Day, let's also recognize and thank the dedicated city and Apex staff, who work behind the scenes year-round to help keep our parks clean, our programs running, and our community strong. We appreciate the proclamation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Glenn, would you like to say something, please?
Just a few words, I promise.
Yes, please.
Thank you all very much for this proclamation tonight. I want to recognize the partnership and the collaboration that we shared between our two agencies, providing passive recreation through parks and trails, active recreation through facilities and programming, to make Arvada the fantastic place it is to both work, and to live, and to play. So, thank you.
Thank you. And since there's quite a few folks, if we want to do a photo, I'm going to invite you guys to come on up here.
We'd like to do a photo, madam, and we'd also give you some schwag to wear for the photo.
More schwag, yeah. Schwag. Just one little one? Guys, they did give us schwag, like, three weeks ago. I love it, I love it. Here we go. Put them on, everybody. Put them on. Build together, play together. I like that. Put it on. Here. Ms. Davis, if you get a, you can snap it if you need to. Shauna, this one's yours. Here we go, this one, this one goes down to Brad. Okay. There we go. We know our names. All right, next we have public comment, this is three-minute public comment for items not scheduled on this evening's agenda, so if you have something not for a hearing, etc., this is your opportunity to address the council. We always ask that comments be directed at us, not at other members of the chamber. Also, no applause, no booing, we want to create a safe environment, and not have any kind of potential public intimidation or anything like that inadvertently happen. So with that, I'm just going to give you guys a chance to come up, state your name and address for the public record when you get up here. We'll start with Ed Tomlinson. And I very rarely do this, but Mr. Tomlinson, if you could give away for people who might be interested in the parade to contact you this time, that would be great.
Yes, I will, thank you. First of all, before I get into, first of all, Ed Tomlinson, Parade Chair, Arvada Harvest Festival. Before I get into that, that lady who spoke about housing, she's a keeper.
Yes, she is.
That's one. Two, whoever produces the Arvada Report is awesome. And three, I heard your gavel, and it was kind of weak. And, you know, a month ago or so, I was here, and I brought a bugle, and you wouldn't allow that, so how about a whistle? So how about a whistle? All right, well, maybe this is, okay, all right. So Gigi couldn't make it, so the super evening entertainment is over. I want to give you a sense of probably what's coming to the parade. I've been offered a children's train, and it has 17 seats, and the maximum weight is 150 pounds. And I would love to hear how we can utilize that rather than just throwing children in there. And I've heard about dogs, I've heard about maybe elementary school children that are all playing a song on an instrument, et cetera. So I would like to hear about that. I'm working toward getting long-horned cattle. Goats are already in play. And when I did this years ago, we had a lady who carried a long-necked geese in a basket, and the crowd loved it. So this year, I'm going to have two of them. And there's a dance routine group out of Brewfield, 24 of them, they're seniors, and they also perform at the Denver Nuggets once a month. So they're in, and I hopefully, I think we can get them to do flash, is it called flash mobs? Flash, flash, whatever, at the festival. Wow, 49 seconds. Oxens with a covered wagon. Since I'm a little out of time, I'm also working toward, long time ago, there used to be a trolley in Arvada that serviced Arvada back in the 40s and early 50s. That trolley is sitting in Wyoming, and it's been fully restored, and they're paying 600 a month rent to leave it there. I am checking to see what it would cost to bring it down for the parade. There's Jolly Rancher, ballroom dancers, the chalk for the children. My name is Ed Tomlinson, 303-596-5555. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. No, no whistles, please. Next, we have Mike Rollick. Yes, absolutely. Ms. Clemmons, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Clemmons, and I live at 6202 Kilmer Loop, 80403, and I'm here regarding the House Bill 1313, and I'm in support of Arvada against this House bill. To me, this is not a matter of yes in my backyard. The lawsuit supports retaining the home rule rights for Arvadans to have a voice in what their government and city should look like. The lawsuit seeks to protect our rights to respond to land development issues and other home rule entitlements. If we allow this intrusion by the state of Colorado, what will be next? My dear mother used to say, "Give them an arm, and they will take a leg too." What will the state impose on us next? We must support Arvada and the other home rule cities in this lawsuit. We want to continue to have a voice in the land use codes of Arvada and any other governmental issues that affect our city. We need to protect our rights to support and or question government issues at the local level. Let's keep Arvada for the citizens and by the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Rollick.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mike Rollick, and I'm here on behalf of Charleston Valley Coalition, 18735, West 59 Tribe, Golden, Colorado 80403, and somewhere along the lines, I lost my voice. So Lynn said it really amazingly well, but I want to take a minute to reflect what we just heard from everybody trying to keep 55 people in their homes based on losses from a federal program. When we see things get out of the local purview and into larger structures, things, things can be decided from very far away and then affect very local people. I applaud the efforts here by trying to keep the 55 people in their homes, but once again, I think local governance does govern best. When we, I was listening to the 1304, 1313 Jeffco meeting, and Jeffco estimates that in Jefferson County, we're going to have 700 acres affected, 40 DUs per acre, 28,000 units, 71,400 new people. And that's with the exemptions for agricultural land and rights of way and such, flood plains. That's a lot of people, and if Arvada's looking at the same, obviously, we understand there could be a lot of issues with water and infrastructure and such. So we definitely appreciate that. I do want to bring something else up, though. This is a very interesting discussion, I think needs to get looked at a little bit more. Flock safety. I've talked about flock safety and the automatic license plate readers with Mr. Councilmember Pfeifer. A new situation just happened down in Texas, and this does not impugn any of our law enforcement at all, but there was a sheriff office that used 83,000 automatic license plate readers and tracked down a woman who had a self-administered abortion. And they used 6,809 flock safety cameras to do this. These are nationwide databases held by a third-party company. This is not a discussion about abortion or not, this is a discussion about freedoms. When we start looking at that, we want to make sure that that's protected. Also, the FBI was just audited by the DOJ, audit of the FBI's investigation of efforts to mitigate effects of ubiquitous technical surveillance. And ubiquitous technical surveillance is defined as one of five things, and the first one on the list is visual and cameras or physical surveillance. Now, there was a story when they were working with El Chapo on a drug cartel case, that there was a hacker who gave a palette of services, including hacking Mexico City's camera system to follow FBI Assistant Legal Attache around the city. And according to the case's agent, the cartel used the information to intimidate and in some instances, kill potential sources or cooperating witnesses. So in general, when we think about these cameras, we look in one vector, but we always have to keep our eye on the freedom aspect as well. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Next, we have Eric C. Myers.
Thanks, Council, for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Eric C. Myers, 6335 West 71st Place, Arvada 8003. So what leads me to come here is something that I had some private conversations with a few of you last month, and this is the result of the Pride Month dedication that I caught most of the presentation for a couple weeks ago. And I just want to say, it really pains me to see such virtue signaling for something that really has no meaning for anybody, because anybody of the persuasion of an alternative lifestyle, being their sexual identities or whatever, you know, it's never impacted me in my life. I've engaged with plenty of them who operate in that lifestyle, but they don't broadcast anything about it because it's something they keep behind, behind their bedroom doors. And they never militant about making sure I knew about it. You know, heck, I worked at Crown Hill Mortuary for two years. When I went there, I had no idea I was landing in the land of queers, you know? Lesbian and gay funeral directors all through the place. They, they treat me like a king, but they never impose their lifestyle on me. You know, great, we're in harmony. They've got every right and need and purpose in life that I do, and that's to treat one another just as we're all entitled to be. So, you know, they certainly didn't virtue signal to me, and I'm just here to state, I am ashamed that this city council would endorse such a proclamation, because you're setting people up for a fall. You know, their pride is going to be their fall, and the need to promote this like it's a cure for cancer is just beyond me. I, I mean, just treat people like people, you know? Treat them with dignity. You don't have to go around blaring it. Certainly, why aren't we giving the military a month to celebrate? Why are we not giving the firefighters a month to celebrate? You know, why are we not promoting White Men Month, you know? Why, why aren't we promoting Indian, Asian-American Month, you know? What, I mean, it just drives me nuts. Anyways, I just really want the council to consider, what is driving you to put such an endorsement behind this recognition of a group of people that, aside from their uniqueness, they still have all the respect and dignity from everybody, or should?
Mr. Myers, your time is up, so-
I see.
Thank you.
Any comment?
We're not allowed to respond at this time, but if you get in touch with us, we will respond to you with our thoughts. Okay?
Okay. And thanks, Ms. Davis, for knowing my precursor to this.
Thank you.
I hope-
Mr. Myers, your time is up. Thank you. Next, we have Harrison Wiltredink.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and also to hear Ms. Espinoza talk about both the problems and the challenges with the city's housing work. I'm here on behalf of Yimby Arvada, presenting a petition, which I have given to Ms. Rush before this meeting, with signatures from over 70 individuals in Arvada and surrounding neighborhoods, the majority of them Arvadans living here in our city. The people who signed this petition are disappointed in council's refusal to consider common sense reforms passed last year by the state legislature that would make it easier to build homes in Arvada in the places where they're obviously a good fit, like near our trains and bus lines. These are the same laws already mentioned by Lynn and Mike. They are disappointed, the petition signers are disappointed that council's decision came at a time when Arvada homes are expensive and in short supply. As according to our own housing needs assessment, Arvada's median home sales price is out of reach for workers earning a median wage in all industries, even with one and a half earners per household, and fewer than half of industries provide a median wage that could support the median rent in Arvada. The petition signers are disappointed that Arvada is out of step with over 20 cities in the region that are already changing their rules to make it easier to build backyard cottages, mother-in-law suites, and other accessory dwelling units, housing types that are widely compatible with existing neighborhoods, and wholeheartedly championed by organizations like the AARP as a way for longtime residents to gracefully age in place in the neighborhoods that they love. The petition signers are disappointed that Arvada is falling behind more than a dozen cities in the region that are already changing their rules to make it easier to right-size the amount of parking that is built for homes in order to avoid the massive waste of land caused by our historical one-size-fits-all parking mandates. In short, myself and the signers of this petition are disappointed to see Arvada's inaction on these pro-housing solutions, especially when other cities in the region are choosing a path of action, and especially at a time when we see reforms like these working to decrease housing costs effectively in other cities around the U.S., from Denver to Portland to Minneapolis. They would like to see, and we would like to see, Arvada commit to embracing those as well. Fortunately, this is a decision that we can change at any time. Based on local conversations and public feedback on these specific policies, myself and the signers of the petition urge council to do exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we have Richard and Kay Swanson.
Hello. I hate to bring this up during Parks and Recreation Month, but I'm here about the native area mowing of grass. City put together a nice presentation on how they mow all the native grass areas around town, and it's not happening around our neighborhood, and I wanted to see why that was. I put together a map of where it should be happening, but it hasn't happened yet. I have tried to contact the Open Space Director and the parks by phone, left messages, have not got a call back. So I wouldn't be here at all if I hadn't gotten a call back, but I haven't. So I was hoping to get clarification on where they mow and when they mow. In past years, they have done it, so I'm just kind of wondering why it hasn't happened this year. So I'd like to present this map and see if there could be something done about that.
Absolutely. If you will give the map to Ms. Rush, we will make sure that gets to the appropriate hands, and somebody will call you back.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right. With that, is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment of this evening's agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda. They are R25-056, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and JR, J-A-R-C-C-O Construction LLC for construction services for Alcoyra Street Past 78th Avenue to 80th Avenue, project number 20-SC-26, C.D. Project TAPM 040-036, SA 23662, in an amount not to exceed $2,65,314.50. R25-057, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and Cheyenne and Arapahoe tribes for consultation services in redevelopment of Gold Strike Park in an amount not to exceed $20,000. R25-058, a resolution authorizing a lease agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Thomas Trujillo for the property located at 7295 Kipling Street, Arvada, Colorado 8004, also known as Shaft House. And finally, R25-059, a resolution authorizing an agreement regarding funding of major drainage way planning and flood hazard area delineation for Little Dry Creek by and between the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, doing business as Mile High Flood District, the County of Adams, the City of Westminster, and the city of Arvada. I apologize, Councilmembers Davis and Ambrose, or Davis and Pfeifer, I don't know which one of it hit your buttons first, so Councilmember Davis, thank you.
Is there any discussion? If no, there is no discussion, I'd like to move that R25-056, the resolution, through resolution, R25-059, be approved and accepted.
Thank you so much. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. We have no resolutions this evening, so I will turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim Morman for first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. I move CB 25-014, An Ordnance Repealing and Reenacting Section 2-95, Departments Established and Retitling, Repealing, and Reenacting Section 2-96, Department Titles of the Arvada City Code to Reflect Changes in Department Names and Department Director Titles. And I move CB 25-015, An Ordnance Amending, Repealing, and Reenacting Various Sections of Article III, Fire Restrictions or Bans of Chapter 42, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Arvada City Code, Be Approved on First Reading, Order Published in Full, and a public hearing set for July 15th, 2025, at 6:15 PM.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. All right, we have one public hearing on this evening's agenda, and who was it that said I have a weak gavel? All right. I will open the public hearing for CB 25-013, An Ordnance Amending Section 102-32, Definitions and Repealing and Reenacting Section 102-40, Property Owners Responsible for Charges of Article II, Water and Sewer of Chapter 102, Utilities of the Arvada City Code, Ordnance Number 4899. Ms. Rhodes, our Director of Infrastructure, has this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. This ordinance amends Section 102-32, Definitions and Repeals and Reenacts Section 102-40, Property Owners Responsible for Charges. The city code allows the city to suspend water service for unpaid water and sewer charges. In 2020, the water shut-off process was suspended due to the COVID pandemic. This decision was made to ensure that all residents, regardless of account delinquency, had access to fresh water for hygiene purposes, specifically handwashing to prevent the spread of the virus. As of now, the shut-off process remains inactive, and instead, delinquent accounts are managed only through our annual lean process. A review of our current practices indicates that relying solely on the lean process is inefficient, consuming significant resources, and failing to effectively encourage timely customer payments. Therefore, the city intends to resume the water shut-off process to help influence customer behavior and reinforce payment priorities. The item before you includes updates to clarify the notice requirements and the due process requirements. Overall, the shut-off process is a critical mechanism to recover uncollected revenue, provide efficient internal operations, and reinforce accountability for utility payments. and reinforce accountability for utility payments. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approve CB-25-013.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to get public comment on this item? Mr. Rollick, please come forward.
Water is basically a public resource. I know it costs money to get water places, but we were just looking at how to keep 55 people in their homes because they're having trouble paying bills. Is there any other way to do this than shut people's water off? With that, water is life. So that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers would like to get public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and turn it over to council questions. Mayor Pro Tim Morgenman.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Rhodes, could you please walk us through if we were to pass this ordinance tonight and return to our practices before COVID, what is the procedure when someone is delinquent on paying their water bill? What notification do they get? What steps are taken to prevent having water being shut off?
Thank you. I'll give this a start, and then our utility services manager is here to correct me if I need some additional information. So a customer bill is mailed, and in 30 days, the bill is due. On day 36, since that bill mail date, customers will start to get a delinquent notification via email and call. Then 43 days since the bill distribution date, a shut-off letter is provided. There is a fee associated with that letter. On day 51 from that bill date, customers again get a notification, a call, and an email notice informing that there's another five days before a shut-off process would be initiated. And then typically 56 days since that bill date, the Monday following that, a customer would be shut off. There's a number of information provided through those notification process to contact our utility services team, who can then walk through some different options that customers have, including payment plans, one-time hardship credits, or equalized billing that can help them in the future better manage those bills. So those are typically the customer assistance programs that we offer.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Has there, so going back to before the pandemic when we did this practice, do we have data on how people responded to those options before, to prevent shut-off? So, you know, like, how many people actually then took advantage of assistance and prevented the shut-off? And how many people actually went all the way to shut off? Do we have that kind of data available?
Excuse me, we have that data. We have data from the shut-off report when the notices begin to go out to when the shut-offs are actually scheduled. We also have participation numbers for those different programs that I mentioned, year over year, for when customers are able to take advantage of our credits. So I can start to provide some of those ranges here for the record. And Debbie, again, I might ask for your assistance if I start to state things. So pre-pandemic levels, typically, we'd run a shut-off list that ranges in the 3,000 to 4,000 level annually. And the actual shut-offs that were occurring pre-pandemic were around the 1,700 to 1,900 annually of our accounts. In terms of assistance provided by the city, pre-pandemic trends range from very low hardship credits in the single digits, around 638 to 700 payment arrangements. And again, a number of accounts in the 300s on kind of that budget billing option. Post-pandemic, we've seen those numbers remain relatively steady. In recent years, we may have some increases to report, but again, 500 to 600 arrangements annually post-pandemic and around 300 accounts on budget billing.
So if I understood correctly and heard the numbers, that there still was a significant difference between the amount of actual shut-offs in a year pre-pandemic and those folks that actually took advantage of the assistance. Is that correct?
That's correct. A significant difference.
And so in your best estimate, it's just, is it people deciding just not to take advantage of it and whatever the reason may be? Or is it because we did not have enough assistance? So I'm just trying to get at why people were not taking advantage of the assistance when they could have.
Yeah, there's probably a number of actual and perceived barriers, but I am going to ask our utility services manager to weigh in on some of those trends that we've seen.
Thank you.
Yeah, pre-pandemic, people knew that they had a bill due and went ahead and paid it. They didn't necessarily, they made paying their water bill a priority. And post-pandemic, we haven't seen that so much. We've actually seen the liens increase substantially, and they ultimately knew they didn't have to pay their bill.
No, I understand that. I think I'm asking a different question. And that is, pre-pandemic, from the numbers that Ms. Rhodes presented, there was still a high percentage, a number, I think 1,700 was what I heard, correct me, of the number of shut-offs that actually occurred. And then there was a low number, like 300 or so many people, that were taking advantage of our assistance program. So my question is, why that discrepancy? Why are people not taking advantage? And obviously, there's multiple reasons, and you may not know the answer, and I understand that. But I'm just curious if you do have any insight or anything to support why people are just going ahead and having their water shut off?
Pre-pandemic, they just had their water shut off, and they didn't want to take advantage of any type of assistance.
It's not that we didn't have assistance for them, correct?
Correct, yeah, we absolutely have.
That's what I just wanted to make clear. Okay, thank you.
I would like to ask a couple of follow-up questions up. Well, Councilmember Pfeifer, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, that triggered, so how many of the shut-offs were just turned back on because they just didn't see the bill and didn't pay? I think that's another thing. Because I could tell you, I complained about how automated payments and auto-pay didn't work. For a long time, the city had a melon to check, avoided check, and do it the old-fashioned way. We need to make it easier to pay our bill. Trust me, my wife yells at me every time because I get the $10 added to my bills. It's always late. So how many people are actually getting reinstalled soon after when they realize, like, oh, no, I didn't pay my bill? Do you know, like, that number?
I don't have that number because that's hard to calculate. And it was pre-pandemic, so we weren't actually recording the calls that came in. Pre-pandemic, the shut-offs ranged anywhere from 30 to at a maximum of 70 shut-offs for an entire week. So.
But you don't know how many actually were reinstated the next day or that day? Because they realized.
Most were. All of our statistics show that by the end of the week, by Friday, we shut off on Monday, that we were left with anywhere from one to five people still off because they had not paid. Otherwise, everybody else had paid.
Okay, so out of the 70 a week or whatever you're mentioning, it got down to single digits.
Correct.
By the end of the week. So it's not that the bill was, it might have, it seems to me it's been forgotten, or it was just the last bill to pay, you know, at the end of the day?
Many times, it was the last bill to pay. And we did have many repeat offenders that knew.
Okay, so they were kind of living. So I think that's what gets to your point is like, those repeat offenders, why aren't they taking advantage? Maybe they are, and we just didn't link it. So maybe in a new system, we're able to kind of link history performance with, are they taking advantage of our products that we offer?
Sure.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rupert.
So I'd like to confirm that when we talk about owners being responsible, quite often, it's in a landlord-tenant situation, the tenant's responsible, and the tenant has failed to pay. All the notices that you talked about go both to the tenants and to the owners. Is that right?
That is correct.
Thanks.
But if there's a lien placed on a property, that's against the owner and not against the tenant, correct?
Yes, that is against the owner of the property, yes.
So in these types of scenarios, do we see a lot of conversion for the tenant paying the bill since they were the one who used the water? Or does it often tend to draw out as there's not really an impetus for them to do it?
Ultimately, the owner owns the property, so we do send it to whatever is on the assessor's office as far as mailing address. So, and we ask that ultimately, because it's the property owner's property that they reconcile a lien with their tenant, whether it be they pay them, have the tenant reimburse them, or the tenant pays us.
Okay, and then sort of referencing back to the data that Councilmember Pfeifer elucidated, by the way, thank you, that was my follow-up question. So thanks. And so, pre-pandemic, we saw about, we'd see 70 on Monday. By Friday, it's three or four. So now, we see 70 on Monday. By Friday, what is that new number?
Well, we haven't shut off.
Oh, that's right, we're not shutting off water, but with the lien notice. So they get the lien notice or something like that?
Right, we started, I believe, with over 800 lien notices last year, and we were down to a final of, I believe, 313. But they have raised substantially. Prior to COVID, when we actually shut off water, we would start with maybe 100 or 120 initial lien notifications and be down anywhere from 60 to 80 final liens.
Okay. Any additional questions, thoughts from council? Councilmember Pfeifer?
So if, I forgot where we're at. Or is this a decision item or is this a presentation? I forgot where we were.
Yeah.
If, could we, if we implement this and it's approved, can we just get a report in the next like 60, 90 days as well? Just to see compliance? And then maybe could we try to track linkage between, oh, I just forgot to pay, or I didn't get it? Because I'm telling you, I'm having a weird thing in my house, so I'm curious if other people are too. Because if you go look at my bill, I probably made a few mistakes and paid the late fee. But it's not as convenient. I don't know if we updated the system, like the auto-pay, like I just put a credit card or debit card in. Do we update that system to do that now?
We are working on that and working on a lot of additional functionality as far as the website and the auto-pay.
Yes, I think if we try to remove the barrier of payment, I think it's hard to say, melon, avoided check, and it's the old ACH way of doing things from the 90s and early 2000s. I think if we can modernize with other payment options, we might remove that barrier of payment.
Absolutely. We're looking at actually migrating it out from in-house auto-pay to actually our website. And that would enable credit cards and debit cards.
Wire transfers or whatever we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, EFT. So, okay, if we could just follow up, if the council's okay with it, I would like to just see what the first 90 days look like? How many shut-offs? How many were restored? The Monday-Friday is pretty interesting kind of scenario.
Sure, absolutely.
And then if we can get some data on, like, the reason why, if there's a resolution code on why those happen.
We will try to gain that. We don't always get that at those.
But if you can get some, like, maybe test on a few of them to see why it might have been. That might be, even if it's anecdotal right now, since, until you can get a good database, it might be something valuable for us to learn from.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you for your time on that.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this, for the explanation. And I'm reading in the financial impact section. Based on November and December of 2024, there were 1,267 delinquent accounts in unpaid water and sewer charges. That's pretty substantial. My question, I guess, is why did we wait so long to reinstate our program? I mean, we're in the middle of 2025. Pandemic was declared over. I'm just, I just wonder, it's curious. I'm just curious.
Thank you for the question. Our previous leadership philosophy was to avoid water shut-offs to the extent possible. There was a recognition that the shut-off process doesn't address the underlying root cause issues of financial hardship. But again, after conducting additional analysis, really looking at our own experience in the other cities around us who have reinstated the process, we've learned that we're the only city who's not returned to this process currently. So it's our intention to, our recommendation is to return this process. Again, I think the intention is noble to avoid shut-offs. But using the lien process allows unpaid bills to accumulate versus catching them early when that balance is manageable and also supported through the existing customer assistance programs that we have available versus letting it become a more difficult amount to resolve.
When we see that those bills are accumulating, do we at all contact that user and say, hey, we have these programs that assist? We see that this is becoming untenable. Even, you know, in my mind, you've gotten to $1,200 worth of service fees. Do we contact those users, or do we just let them linger?
Yes, we do contact those users. And again, we have tried to make additional advancements in trying to understand what barriers customers may have to accessing our programs so that we start to see higher utilization. Again, whether those are real or perceived, we want to understand those and address those. So trying to make sure all of those options are readily available and that through, as we reach out each month as an account is delinquent, we're making sure those offerings are communicated. But that's something we want to continue to work on and continue to explore, and we'll be talking about further in our workshop later this evening.
And I think that's important for the public to know that we do make an effort to work with our consumers and that we want to make this a smooth pathway and not challenging and just combative. So thank you for that.
Mayor Pro Tim Morgenman.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the assistance programs, and maybe this is coming in the workshop if I heard you correctly, are we taking on any new approaches this time around with our assistance programs that we weren't doing before to really better communicate that with our customers?
I wouldn't say these are new approaches, but we're continuing to try and work with partner organizations as well as our finance and housing team to ensure that anyone who's already qualifying for other programs or speaking to the city or partners for services already qualifying for other programs, or speaking to the city, or partners for services, are aware of what we also offer for customer assistance. So that continues to happen. In terms of the workshop materials later tonight, we would like to continue that conversation with you about whether we want to increase some of the levels of our current programs, or explore additional programs. For example, we talked about in past sessions a roundup program, and presented what the resource requirements would be around that, and, and certainly, we're continuing to explore other ideas.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Is there any further discussion?
I see no additional lights.
Then I'd like to make the motion. I move that CB twenty-five dash zero one-three, an ordinance amending Section one zero-two dash three-two, definitions and repealing and reenacting Section one zero-two dash four-zero, property owners responsible for charges of Article Two, Water and Sewer, Chapter one oh-two, utilities of Arvada City Code be approved on final reading number four-eight-nine-nine, and ordered published by title only. That's a long title.
It is. Councilmember Ambrose, you wish to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, I will be voting no on this. I really appreciate what the city is presenting, and that the lien process is definitely not working, but I wish there was other solutions that had been presented besides shutting off water, to see if there was a way to do it, and I also appreciate the information that, you know, out of the seventy water shut-offs, by the end of the week, you only had one to five, maybe, who were still behind on it. So I just really don't like shutting off people's water. I know that you have the evidence that's effective, we are the only city that doesn't do it, I've heard all your reasons, and I still just don't think it's a good idea to do, but I am interested to see what happens over the next ninety days, how it does bring people into compliance, and hopefully will prevent people further falling into debt, but I just wanted to explain my no vote.
Much appreciated. I will be a yes vote on this, but I agree with Councilmember Pfeifer's idea of getting kind of a ninety-day report, what are the actual impacts, what are we seeing? Are we seeing a massive uptick of folks who are taking advantage of the assistance? If it's a one-time assistance, have they already had the one-time assistance, and then they're falling behind again? And if there are additional resources those folks may need in this vulnerable state, whether it's connecting with our housing team, other resources that we can help get them plugged into, to help stabilize their situation. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon?
Thank you, I just want to echo that. Mayor, I'll be a yes vote today, but I want us to be very closely watching this, and collecting that data, and coming back and reporting to us, so that if we need to make adjustments, or need to reevaluate the effectiveness of it, and what the impact is, and, and again, what are those barriers that, why people still are not being able to pay and, and getting their water shut off? We need to keep a very close watch on that, and, and make sure that we don't continue to have people having their water shut off, and we don't know why, so I just want to make sure we're very vigilant.
All right, with that, all votes are cast. That passes six to one, with Councilmember Ambrose being a no vote. We have no additional public hearings this evening, so I will close the public hearing portion, oh, I guess that is a weak gavel. We do have a workshop this evening, very appropriately, on utilities rates and fees process. Ms. Rhodes, I'm assuming this one is you as well? Actually, before we begin this, about how long do you think you need, Ms. Rhodes?
We have about forty slides.
Okay, I'm going to call a ten-minute recess for folks to stretch their legs, get some water, and then we will resume back here at approximately seven forty-nine, seven fifty. Thank you, thank you, stronger gavel, good feedback. Welcome back, everybody, Ms. Rhodes, we are ready for this workshop, and if you can get us out of here by eight-thirty, that's forty minutes, I'll give you a hug.
Thank you, I appreciate your time this evening for this topic. You know, really, this is a workshop and a series of workshops where we want to continue our conversations with you to inform our financial planning and preparation for 2026 rate and fee setting, and so, we're hoping to continue those discussions with you tonight, beginning with a recap of when we met, last met, on May thirteenth. We like to kind of recap some of the key follow-up items, one, status of where we're at. Today, we're going to talk through some of the capital improvement projects that are being updated through our budget process, and actually, earlier than we normally do, we'd like to present you a range of our financial scenarios. We were able to work to get that information available sooner than that August and September timeframe, and so, I'm grateful to be able to bring forward some of that information today, receive the direction, so we can bring forward more of the details on what you want to see.
Ms. Rhodes, can I ask you about this worksheet? Are you going to go over how it's different than the ones we've gotten before, or is this the same as we've gotten before?
Absolutely, the framework is similar, but it's been updated with the latest and greatest project information, including the updated financial estimates that have been proposed through this year's budget cycle, as well as any changes to the criticality of the projects based off of our latest operational information.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you for that. We also want to talk through some comparisons, get your feedback on some of our benchmarking we do, again, get some of the conversations continued on affordability, and set us up for next steps. Multiple members of the team are here tonight that I want to be thankful for, and may help us in addressing questions, our utility services manager, city engineer, city attorneys, utilities engineering manager, and our business manager, who will be helping me with tonight's presentation. Not here tonight are our financial partners, who have helped contribute to a lot of the modeling results that you're going to see tonight, so I'm sorry that Brian and Rocky aren't here as well. So just a quick recap, which I hope we're going to cover through some of the slides, as well as subsequent presentations, but I wanted to provide a bit of an introduction here. Some of the questions and themes that we heard last time are continuing to talk a little bit about our history, our systems history, how we got here, and being sure to pair decisions with discussions around risk or consequences. And I just wanted to emphasize again that this has been a journey that we're on. Much of the infrastructure that we're operating today was installed to meet population growth through the fifties and seventies, and now, that infrastructure has come due for replacement. So when you look at the past few decades of utilities rates and fees, essentially, those systems that were installed during that timeframe would not have been ready for replacement in the early two thousands. Not now, those are at end-of-life, those systems, and we continue to manage and track this through our long-term planning asset inventory database, and that helps inform, we update that database every two years, that really helps us inform some of the capital projects that are on your list, and some of the risks involved with not doing the work. Again, much of this work was anticipated, and our former leaders in the council directed us to do master plans and system plans. We accomplished those in 2019 to 2020 timeframe, and we are now on the path of implementing those system plans. I'll refer to the 2021 timeframe, because that's when we really start to talk about the financial strategies necessary to implement the master plans. So we've been on that path, that roadmap, to complete these projects, to, with a focus on supporting timelines for plan development, as well as managing risks with reinvestment. So also during that timeframe, we've been on a focus of ensuring our future water supply, and we are in a very enviable position for that, and that required investment in our water resources portfolio ahead of doing some of these system master plans. So, I'm, I will also share on item, hopefully we can continue to talk about and share the highlights of our work, celebrate the accomplishments of the projects that we're able to complete, and, and fully were supported, and also talk through the history and consequences with each decision made ahead. The other question, number two up there, how do we ensure confidence that we're not over-collecting, and that our financial strategies are aligned with our actual construction spending? We'll speak more to that tonight, but again, I wanted to talk through that our process already includes a regular review of project cost estimates and phasing plans, so that we're trying to really budget year-over-year for the actual construction spending, not preloading the budget of that per, per project in an entire year. We only approve one-year rate and fee increases, but in our modeling, we're looking at scenarios that might include multiple debt issues, and again, we'll emphasize that later in the, in the plan, that helps us try and keep rates as low as possible, or as steady as possible, so we're not seeing those spikes and jumps. And of course, we're balancing our fund balance to meet the requirements for reserves over that tenure model, and as we tighten up the financial scenarios, we'll bring back more information to show you those details in our, in our scenario planning. We've talked a little bit about affordability tonight, and what are we doing to make sure our rates are manageable for all of our customers, and also for our most vulnerable customers? So we'll continue to talk about that tonight. And when will bills double due to this overall master plan implementation? We have some actual data to share with you tonight, I'll, I'll share with you the information that since our financial strategy kind of roadmap was initiated in 2021, when we completed those master plans, we are now forecasting in the current model, if we were to fully fund all of the projects that are outlined in the tenure plan, our water bills will have doubled in 2028. So we'll share more details in the presentation ahead. We also want to ensure we're responsive into how you need to see the information for your decision-making, so we are working on bringing back some of what I'm calling our stacked bar figures, that shows priorities for funding debt service, operations, and then various levels of criticality for capital projects. So we don't have that for you this evening, but we will be sure to be bringing that information forward to you in our financial scenarios. We're going to talk a little bit about comparison cities, we heard some feedback, both to remove some cities that are not comparable, but we want that feedback from you tonight. And of course, we want to show the scenarios based off of funding some, or all of the CIP, and that's what you'll see in the range of scenarios tonight. There's also been continuing on the questions around consequences of risk, and what happens if we continue to defer investments? And how are we defining project priorities based off of our level of service expectations? And again, that's where we're going into deep dives on the one pager to help inform this, and wanted to provide more information on just level of service standards. So we go through a two-year update on our level of service, we use this to also inform our capital project prioritization process, and we'd be happy to present some of those updates, we're going through that process right now in 2025. I also wanted to acknowledge one item here, there was a request for a stormwater workshop specifically, and so we'll have some opportunity to get some feedback from you tonight about the timing of that workshop, and when it's best to bring that information forward. So an update, when council authorized issuance of additional bonds on the water and sewer funds, and approved the rates in the 2025 rate-setting process to do so, I'd like to report that last week, we had a successful competitive sale of those bonds. We had, so as shown here in the 2025 column, approximately ninety million for water and fifteen million for sewer, each with a thirty-year term. We had good competition, multiple bidders, and the interest rates for both funds came in lower than what our initial financial scenarios had projected. So our finance director wanted us to report that that was a successful sale, and we expect to close next week on July ninth.
What is the rate?
The rate for the winning bidder on the water bond is four-point-five-four-eight, and on the sewer bond is four-point-six-two-three.
Okay, and do you have any, any, oh, information in front of you, what the equivalent yield that is to a non-tax-exempt bond?
I don't think I have that information, but I have to be follow-up.
No, no worries, thank you.
Thank you.
Quickly, Jaclyn, just, we had ninety million for water, and how much for sewer?
Fifteen.
Thank you.
So this chart, just wanted to put that into comparison of a little bit of system history, and so if you were to put the past bond issues into today's dollars, you'd see that the investments made in the sixties, seventies, eighties, and two thousands are over four-hundred-and-five million in today's dollars. So during that time, of course, we built water treatment plants, the Arvada reservoir, major upgrades to those plants over time, but again, just comparing that to today's plan, and what we have in terms of needs added in the tenure plan.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Thank you, Mayor, so I just wanted to note, I appreciate also that you put it in 2025 comparable dollars, because it shows the last time that we had made investments of this size, right? Is, so every time we spent this much money on water and wastewater, we've always issued a bond, or have we had money from other sources?
We can bring back the data on the other sources, this was just specifically to put the bond issues against those funds in context.
Right, because it's interesting that in nineteen sixty-five, we spent, we issued a ninety-one-point-one million bond, which is comparable to what we're doing this year, and then about twenty years later, in nineteen eighty-five, we have a ninety million dollar, which is another comparable bond investment level, and then we don't have those spending levels again for another forty years until 2022, but then it's twenty-two and twenty-five so closely together that we're issuing bonds, so it seems like a little out of pattern, unless in some of these intervening years, we had funding from other sources besides bonds to build out our infrastructure.
Correct, so of course, it's a combination of financial strategies, but major projects, sometimes the, the investment strategy, or the, the funding strategy includes issuance of bonds, again, that provides that the future users of, and benefitters of those system improvements are paying that debt over time.
Yeah, and then I will also reflect Councilmember Davis's point, that these are also times in which Arvada probably experienced a lot of growth in sixty-five and eighty-five.
Growth or regulatory drivers demanding, again, major treatment process updates, things of that nature.
Thank you.
So at this point, we're going to walk through each fund and a range of scenarios, and then we'll wrap it up with some of your direction around affordability and next steps. I'm going to pass it off to our business manager, Chris.
Actually, I have a quick question on this, following up on Councilmember Ambrose's point, so, you know, you see these longer jumps, sixty-five, eighty-five, approximately how long, so we know these are thirty-year bonds, approximately how long can the future ratepayers expect this infrastructure to last?
Depends on the infrastructure, thirty years to fifty years, or more for some of our major facility investments.
So something for the 2050s, most likely?
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay. Good evening, so we'll walk through the three funds that we're presenting this evening, the water fund, the wastewater fund, and the stormwater fund, and we'll start off with the water fund. So, some information that you have seen in previous presentations, we're updating and showing you again this evening, so it should look somewhat familiar. The first is a map of our ten-year CIP for the water fund, for years 2026 through 2035. You'll see up in the upper right-hand corner, some citywide projects, and those don't have a location, they go everywhere across the city. Those are also split out by the colors that we have prioritized our projects by, so red, orange, and yellow for levels of criticality. You'll see on the map a couple of circled spots, one is the Indiana shops, and that would be for some of our distribution and transmission projects. You'll see on the left-hand side, some, excuse me, Ralston Water Treatment Plant projects circled, you'll see some projects that are by the reservoir, those are mostly raw water projects, and you'll see the Arvada Water Treatment Plant project, one of which is orange, and that is actually a raw water project, but the replacement plant project itself is actually in the, the Ralston circle, so there, there should be a red one on the Arvada map. And to speak to Councilor Ambrose's question, we'll walk through the one pager that we've presented this evening, it is slightly different than ones you've seen in the past, it is the latest and greatest information. So what the team does is go through, in the off-season, the non-budget season, what projects we've been putting off onto the parking lot, we've been updating our project costs and timing, and then we come back during the budget cycle to present that information to you. It also goes into our financial modeling, and I'll speak about that a little bit later. This slide has a lot of words on it, and you've seen it before, and it is still the same information, but I'll walk through it again, just to refamiliarize everyone. Our one pager projects show the projects that will keep the lights on, so in this project list that you have in front of you, and that we'll go through in another slide, there are no projects on there that are, boy, wouldn't it be great to have, or this is the fanciest version of something that we could possibly think of. All the projects on this list are required, they just have different levels of criticality. So again, we have them coded as red, orange, or yellow. Red are the highly critical projects that are needed to complete, those are critical for public health and safety, for staff safety, for meeting regulations, and can impact the potential opportunities for us to receive water, which are more of the raw water projects. Failures of these assets are imminent and/or occur regularly, and these assets, when they fail, impact large numbers of people, including multiple pressure zones, so that is the impact of what happens when we don't do red projects. Orange projects are less critical than the red projects, they still have health and safety concerns, but those are minimal and can be mitigated. There might be some short-term impacts to receiving water, failures of these assets could occur at some stage, but they're not imminent, or they're not happening regularly. And then failures are not impacting the same level of customers as our red projects are. If we move on to the yellow projects, those are low-critical projects, they are ones that have currently little or no impact to public or team safety, we meet our regulations, we're still receiving water, failure of these assets isn't likely to occur within the budget cycle, but it can happen down the road, and there are far fewer people who are impacted by failures. So for projects that are currently marked as yellow or low-critical, if we don't do them now, they will eventually become orange, orange projects will eventually become red, and red projects will then, we will see more occurrences of failure than are currently happening, and can impact large numbers of people. So if I move on to a snapshot of what the one pager looks like for the water fund, and you have that in front of you, you can see across the top, it's the years that we have, so 2026 through 2035 is our ten-year planning horizon, and then along the left-hand side, you'll see the projects listed red, orange, yellow. We do have in very tiny type, the consequences of not doing, that was something that we were working on to make sure we understood the, the implications of what happens with these projects if we don't move forward with them. At the very bottom of the page, you'll see a roll-up of each year's total projects, and then you'll see a roll-up of what each color coding is, so for the red, orange, and yellow projects. A reminder that there are some projects that are just off of the page, so while we show you through 2035, there are projects that will be coming up in 2036, the late 2030s and the early 2040s that aren't on this list yet, because they're not within that ten-year horizon. Notably, we've talked about the replacement of the Ralston Water Treatment Plant, and that's one that's coming down the road. We are anticipating having to replace that and having it in service by the mid-2040s. That planning will start in the mid-to-late 2030s, so it's not on this list, it will likely be on the list next year when we come back for this process again.
Thank you. Councilmember Ambrose?
Yeah, I wanted to ask you about the top one on this list, which is the Moffett Project Participation. It says it's a contractual obligation?
Yes.
Can you explain the obligation?
So, the city of Arvada contracted with Denver Water back in the late nineties to receive three-thousand-acre feet of water from their gross reservoir expansion project, and so we committed to paying one-sixth of the project costs to enlarge the reservoir, for which we would receive a determined amount of water, and so we have signed paperwork a long time ago that said we will participate in this, and we will see it through, and so that's why this is a contractual obligation. And I'll pause and allow folks to read the list. If you have questions about projects, we can certainly walk through those if you have them. Uh, Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I, I do have a few questions. Um, so, um, if we are replacing, uh, where is it? It's 328 million for replacement and expansion. Okay. Where is the, where is the actual water treatment plant?
It's the Arvada Water Treatment Plant, and that is, um,
Oh, I.
Yep, very close to the Ralston plant.
Okay. The, so, I was just trying to make sure that when that plant comes online, I'm assuming your, your maintenance that you have, the treatment, maintenance, and repairs would go down. But I was trying to look for that, and maybe I looked at the wrong line.
The, the O&M.
But it seemed to go up.
The, the O&M for these projects won't be on this sheet. This is just the capital spending. When we have more information about the type of plant and the maintenance needs, we will be building that into the operating costs.
Well, because you have on your second line, water treatment plant, maintenance, and repairs.
And that is for the Ralston plant currently.
Okay.
So, we have.
And that doesn't say that. So, I didn't catch that.
We will, we will update that.
Because I, that's why I can't find the plants you're referring to necessarily. So, that is for the Ralston plant. Okay. All right. Well, I'll move on. May, maybe some clarity in the titles would help. Um, when you go down to piping, when you're looking at the middle, uh, the medium critical, like Zone 6 piping, Phase 1 and 2,
Mm-hmm.
And actually, the, the tank of above, you have a number listed between, you know, 6.2 million between 26 and 35, but it's not programmed out in that range. Why would that? When do you plan to spin that?
That money, I believe, and I'm going to ask our engineering manager to, to provide some more details, but I believe that's money we already have in our account. And so, that one is current, and then the out-years show up, and I will.
Okay.
I am happy to answer that question. The Zone 6 work is needed for growth, and we are working very diligently on siting and, uh, moving forward with that. And we have planned for that, and much of that money is already budgeted.
So, we already have it in the bank?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Already have it in the bank?
Yes. That's my under, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, that explains that. Because I was trying to understand, like, the annual water line replacement repairs in yellow, which is 97 million, you know? But, um, those are, I'm assuming are different locations in Zone 6 piping issues.
They are. They are. That is replacement piping. That is resilient projects. That is, uh, the bulk of that money goes towards replacing, uh, AC pipe, the asbestos cement pipe we have, as well as doing some work on our transmission lines.
Okay. And so, just to make sure, I'm understanding that there is no maintenance or operations, even though there's some titles in here, uh, programmed in the capital expenditures?
No. It should not be.
So, we probably need to understand what treat, treatment, plant, maintenance, maintenance is in the capital. I just want to make sure we're not pulling out capital bonds on stuff that should be operating in maintenance. We need to minimize our debt and not put it into, uh, into there. So.
Agreed. Do you want to take Brad's account?
Okay. Because I see a couple of these say maintenance in their titles.
So, we have, in our operating budgets, which aren't shown here, we have the ongoing operation maintenance of the plants or the system. What we have in the capital program are the large items. So, if the water treatment manager needs a big piece of equipment, that would come out of this water treatment plant repair and replacement account. For ongoing, everyday, normal needs, that comes out of the operating budget.
Okay. So, we, maybe you want to clarify that. Because to me, if it says maintenance, it seems like it shouldn't be coming out of here i- if it's in the title. So, you might want to maybe either describe it a little bit differently, or I, I see why. Like, you're saying a big purchase to do the maintenance on the plant. It could be a big lift or something else that's being purchased to do the maintenance, but it is a capital purchase?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Our finance department, um, considers anything that's over $5,000 or has a lifespan of more than, I think, three or five years to be a capital item or depreciable item. So, we're constantly trying to find that balance in what goes into the operating budgets and what goes into the CIP budgets.
I didn't know 5,000. It seems such a low number.
I know.
So, okay. Uh, that's all the questions I have right now.
Councilmember Rupert.
Thank you, and thank you for the updated list. Um, I have, a, a couple of the items, uh, I'm looking at the red section, Arvada Blund Reservoir Study, studies, plural. Um, and I, I'm a little, I, I'm curious about why it's, uh, red criticality, and, uh, the description, uh, seems to be it's recreation and wildlife and that kind of impact. And so, why did it fall in the red, uh, in the red criticality?
That is more of a water quality concern for us than it is from a, a different perspective. So, we want to look at what the, um, quality of the lake is, lake reservoir, um, and how that's going to impact our treatment options. We've had a lot of, um, movement in that reservoir over the last several years. We had a lot of stuff flow in after the 2013 floods. That changed the, the topography of the reservoir. So, we want to look at not only water quality, also what does the topography look like so we can know exactly how much storage we actually have in that body of water. So, that is something that we are looking at from a treatment perspective as well as an overall capacity perspective.
Okay. But, but not doing these studies isn't going to result in water, uh, failing somewhere in the system. It's not going to, um, it doesn't meet all the criteria that you have on your list for the reds. And so, I'm interested in, if I'm, if I'm a citizen reviewing the list of consequences of not funding this, I don't really understand why it's in the red.
That is a great question. Uh, reservoirs do move slowly over time in terms of their water quality. However, we have seen, um, quite a bit more movement in changes in water quality in recent years. And while the treatment plant has been able to treat it, uh, we, it, there, there can be a tipping point in reservoirs where it goes from just moving slowly to, to moving very quickly. And, uh, we have had some algal blooms that are very difficult to treat. And so, we're wanting to get a handle on that and, uh, keep them from getting worse. And there's actually methods you can do to make those, um, to reverse that and have less of them. Um, and none of us on staff are like true limnology experts. We all like to dabble in it. Um, but that's what that money is for, is to, to help us reduce the instances of algal blooms and manganese specifically. There's some other things as well.
Okay. So, you're actually talking about a worsening water quality problem that we're running out of the ability to handle. We're not talking about the, uh, dams moving, and we have a safety problem downstream or something like that. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Um, $5,000 seems really low. You can't do anything for $5,000 in this economy right now. So, I would like us to maybe consider increasing that number. And for three to five years, since this is a 10-year planning horizon, I'm assuming that these three to five years have been covered in a previous planning program. So, um, that just, that just really kind of concerns me because I don't want you to have to come to council every time you want to spend $5,102. I think that's, it's not the best and wisest use of, of your time or hours. And then, um, in the reservoir study, are, so we're not looking at volume and we're not looking at, uh, dam safety?
Not in this study. We, we already have a lot of information about dam safety. If you want to pitch in on this one too, please.
I, I would love to pitch in. We actually do plan to do a bath metrics study, which is topography on the bottom of the reservoir, which will allow us to know if and how much, uh, storage we lost in the 2013 floods with, uh, just a ton of sediment coming in. Um, but no on the dam safety. That is covered, um, in regular inspections by, um, staff as well as the state engineer's office. And, uh, I'm happy to say the state engineer is always generally very happy with us. So, uh, and we do regular projects, uh, fixing little things here and there on the dams and the spillways, but that's not what this is.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And then, um, I guess that's all I had. Thank you.
I see no more lights. Please proceed.
We are very protective of our dam. I will say that. We do have a lot of, just to pile on to what Mary said, we do annual dam inspections. Those are required by the state. They do a big walkthrough with us because I think everybody is very concerned in having those structures maintain their stability. So, how do we use this information? Before I go to the next slide, um, one of the things we've talked about in previous workshops is we take this information, these capital projects and their various prioritizations. We take our existing debt service schedules. We take projected debt service schedules. And then we take our operating expenses, and we put those into our financial models and look at what are some ranges of scenarios that we can present to you for consideration. So, what you'll see on the next couple of slides for the water fund are a minimal scenario and a maximum sort of scenario. And then, as Jaclyn mentioned earlier, we are coming back to you in August and September for some more workshops. So, if you want to direct us to provide more information on any of these scenarios or something in between, we are happy to come back with those. So, some descriptions, we have two options for you. Again, the minimal scenario, and that funds only the amount needed to cover our debt service for our existing debt, and then projected debt for minimal projects. Those are the projects that we will be spending the 2025 bond issuance on and for our operating expenses. So, our 2025 bond issuance from last week, again, a very good success for the city, um, we will be spending those proceeds primarily on the gross reservoir expansion participation and then our, our VADA replacement project. For the fully funded scenario, that is exactly as it says. We are going to show you a scenario that fully funds all of the CIP, red, orange, and yellow projects. So, those are the, the, the two different scenarios. They will include debt in some scenarios, and I'll walk through those. And answer any questions. So, how does this look when you look at the numbers? So, across the top, we're showing you the, the funding scenario, the description again, what the variable rate and the fixed fee adjustments would be, and then what the 2026 overall revenue increase is. I apologize for the typo. So, if you look at the minimal funding scenario, again, that funds all the debt service, our operating expenses, and those projects needed to complete the gross reservoir expansion and the Arvada plant project. The variable rate would be a 5% increase, and that's the rate that we charge to customers based on their consumption. The fixed fee, which is that standard fee that we charge regardless of the amount of water that is used, would not go up at all. And so, that overall revenue increase would be 4.3%. That scenario does not allow us to complete any of the other projects on this page other than the Denver project and the replacement project. So, we would be pushing off some projects that are red, orange, and yellow. On the other end of the spectrum is the fully funded scenario. So, again, funding all of the projects on the list and our debt service for existing debt and projected debt. We would be looking at a variable increase of 9%. And then, we would recommend a $2 per month fixed fee increase, which is an 18.3% increase, which overall is a 10.3% increase.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, other, so, the minimal is the contractual obligation for the, uh, Moffett project, and then the, uh, water treatment replacement plant, but then no other projects. Are any of the other projects in the red something that like the consequence would be like a Flint, Michigan type of situation? Like, we have an algal bloom in our reservoir that makes the water untreatable and undrinkable because we didn't do that study to mitigate it?
I'm going to ask Mary to answer that question. I will kick it off with, this is primarily to give you some bookends for what scenarios could look like. But Mary, if you can speak to what the impacts would be of some of the red projects not being funded?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I'm just going to go down the list. The water treatment plant maintenance and repairs, which we can come up with a better name on that. Um, that is fixing things in a very old plant that are, um, bigger items. And if we don't fix those, we don't treat water.
So, we would lose the Ralston plant potentially if we don't fund that?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the corrosion control chemical feed, that is a regulatory requirement, um, in that we need to, uh, change, uh, add alkalinity, which I'm getting super technical here. We need to do some changes in our treatment that help with lead and copper. Um, while we fully meet the lead and copper, uh, rule revision right now, um, in terms of distribution system water quality, there's also some rules, um, that are coming into play on treatment, and we need that to meet that. Um, the raw water pump stations upgrades and modifications, our raw water pump stations, uh, pump our Clear Creek rights up to the Arvada Blund reservoir. Um, they are, uh, one of them is fairly old. It's from the early 80s, and it has not had any love in 40 years. So, um, again, if we lose one or more pumps from that pump station, it limits our ability to move our raw water up into the reservoir, which would then limit our ability to send water out into the system.
So, that would, I, I mean, so the corrosive control and this raw water pump, like, if we weren't able to do this, we would, I mean, the Flint, what I mean by the Flint situation is people cannot use the water in their tap. They have to bring in the Culligan bottles, buy bottled water. They have to, or they can't boil. I mean, I think in Flint, they couldn't even boil because it was lead contamination. So, that's the kind of like the catastrophic level that I'm looking at.
So, would it be that catastrophic? I wouldn't say that, that the sky is falling. But is staff concerned, and these are projects that need to get done? Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That the risk is, is growing. Um, and then the chemical system improvements, um, again, that is making sure that, uh, our, our chemical feeds, um, are capable of giving us the, the amount of chemical we need at the right rate so that we are sending potable water out the door.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah. So, um, I'm a little concerned when you say that the pumps that pump the Clear Creek water up to the Blund hasn't had any love in 40 years. Um, certainly, you've done some PMs on them, preventative maintenance.
So, I, I probably shouldn't have been that dramatic. Um, our teams do a great job.
No, I love drama.
Our teams do a great job on maintenance. By, by not receiving love, I'm saying that, um, we've not upgraded the electrical systems. Um, we did have to replace them, one motor or two motors last year, three motors last year.
Wow.
Because they had failed. Um, and so, this is looking at a, a comprehensive, uh, let's, let's make sure this pump station runs for another 30-plus years, um, as reliably as it has the last 40.
Right. Otherwise, it'd be catastrophic. We can't get our water that we have rights to up to the reservoir.
It would mean watering restrictions, definitely.
Yes. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you. And my apologies if you had already answered this, but I just wanted to, I, I appreciate your description of this slide and how it's showing the two ends of the spectrum. And so, I'm going to try to dig a little bit in the middle here. Um, so, the, if, if one scenario that would fall in the middle would be that we would fund all the red, for example, but not the orange or the yellow, um, and I think you said this already, so I apologize. But how, how much time would we have before the orange would move to red if we delayed the orange?
I think it depends on the, on the project itself. Um, if you look at some of the, the zone piping and tank projects in the orange, so the Zone 6 tank is a, a partnership project between the city and Jefferson Center Metro District. So, that's something that we are working on together to meet their needs, but also to meet our needs for the city. If we push that off, it would be an impact to them. Obviously, our resiliency would most likely be impacted, but not dramatically in the next, I would say, several years, I'm guessing?
Two to three.
Two to three. So, not several, a few. Um, if you look at risk and resiliency assessments, those are things that we're doing on an ongoing basis to make sure that we have our eyes on all parts of the system and we know what we need to be doing. I believe that's also, the levels get worse over time. So, we want to stay on top of those. So, not an emergency in the near term will become more critical as time goes by. Um, the Ralston plant system, storage tanks, replacement, and expansion, that is an out-year project. So, it might just continue to get moved out. That is, um, a critical part of the Ralston plant, but not, I would say, the most crucial part of the plant right now. And that's something that could move. And then the fill stations, we currently sell water to folks who come into town and want to, um, buy bulk water for their needs. Those fill stations might not be as reliable, so they would not be generating revenue for us. Um, the SCADA master plan, that is our IT, the utility systems, IT system. It's different than IT in general. And that is something that we want to look at so that, as with any master plan, we can identify the things that need to be done, and then we can pick the ones that need to be done first, put those into play. Um, the other ones are some raw water outlet slide gates and raw water pump pipeline inspections. Again, getting our raw water into our system, it would delay, if things went down, um, the ability to get our water. Watering restrictions could be an option. And then new pump station infrastructure, I'm not entirely sure what the impact would be, if you want to.
So, that line item is to serve, uh, development from roughly where development has ended on. on the west side of JCMD to Highway 93. It would be to provide, and it would provide resilience for all of the Candellus area as well.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
So one thing I think we're missing out of this conversation, maybe it's somewhere in here, is it's not like we don't have capital money. We have, some of our sales goes, what is it, the first 1% goes to CIP projects. Where in here are we allocating those funds to which projects?
We don't have that information in this presentation.
So there is a whole bunch of other projects going on that are funded out of a different color of money that we don't see here. So these are, if these were such a priority, why weren't these put in with the CIP capital money that we get out of sales tax?
I don't have an answer for that right now.
Because I just want to make sure, and now bonding, like 328 million or whatever, that makes sense, we're not going to get that. But some of these, I just shake my head a little bit, like $130,000, we couldn't find that? If it's so critical to do studies, why are we bonding for that? It's a study, why aren't we using our CIP money that we get every year? Yeah, but there's a CIP fund that we get, and they can use that. I mean, John can weigh in.
Mr. Pfeiffer, let me try to clarify a little bit. Our water fund is an enterprise fund, and so the money that comes into it is used exclusively there.
Yeah, I forgot it was an enterprise.
And if you start putting money from outside of it into it, it's no longer an enterprise fund, and then it would fall under the restrictions of Tabor. And so to have these discussions about raising rates would require a vote of the people to do.
Yeah, and I totally spaced the enterprise, I forgot we have to deal with the enterprise on this. So a lot of this, so programmatically, I guess, I guess I just don't have the holistic view of like our funding of what was our operating expenses, what is our maintenance expenses, what, you know, there must have been an earmark of some revenues coming in that were always dedicated to capital. So were we not funding any capital projects through normal revenue sources, and therefore we now need to bond everything?
So our normal way of looking at things is, the first thing we want to fund and that we have to fund is debt service. That's our number one requirement, and then we fund operating, and this is how we use our financial model. So it goes through debt service first, operating expenses next, and then everything after that becomes capital. And that's when we start looking at the different colors of the projects to see what we could possibly fund and what we might need bonding to cover. So to go back a couple of seconds to what you were saying about why would we bond for a $130,000 project, we wouldn't. We would cash fund that, we would bond fund the big ticket items.
Okay, and that's where you're going to get your revenues, thus asking for a more increase. I just wanted to make sure we're mentally staying up with you. And then the, switching to this slide here that you have in front of us, on the fixed fee, what is our current fixed fee?
It is $21.83 per bi-monthly bill.
Okay, so it's $21, and the fully funded is adding yet another $2 to that?
$2 a month, so it would be $4 total for the bi-monthly, so it would go 21.83 bi-monthly to 25.83 bi-monthly.
Okay, yeah, in the future, can we show what it is now? Because I remember it was down to, I don't know what it was, $8, $4 when I started, and now it's, you know, five times that.
Yes.
Because that fee's a little bit different, and I'd like to see that in these reports.
One of the things, and thank you for bringing that up, one of the concepts we're working on with our financial modeling for the utilities, especially for the water and sewer funds, because they do have that fixed fee component to the revenue, is finding that balance of what percentage of the fixed revenues should be, what the overall percentage of fixed fees should be in the overall revenues. Sorry for mangling that. Some of our larger neighbors use a 20% rule, so to speak, so their fixed revenues are 20% of their overall revenues. We are not in that neighborhood yet, that would be some more substantial increases down the road. We have increased, to your point, I believe back in 2021, the fixed fee was $5.83. And so it has gone up significantly, and that was a plan to increase the revenues, importantly, on the fixed side of the revenue stream, so that we had a consistent revenue for funding operating capital and debt service.
Fixed is to pay for, you just said it, I think, for debt? Was it to pay for debt?
Fixed pays for our fixed expenses. So it's going to pay for our debt service, the components of our operating expenses that are fixed, and 80% of our operating expenses are fixed, and that's where the fixed fee technically would go.
And then the variable is all the usage, and so all the delivery system of the system?
Theoretically, yes. We don't allocate the funds that way, we don't say we make this much money in fixed revenues, so they will go to here first. We're not that granular in our modeling right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Ambrose.
I really want to compliment you on the consequences of not doing. I think that really helps, you know, helps me understand what's going on and to be able to explain it to residents who contact me and are like, thanks for raising my rates, council member. And it's like, well, yeah, I want you to be able to drink water, so, you know. But I, it would be great if every row was filled out on the consequences, and if the consequences could be a little bit more, and maybe you already have this in the communications plans with residents, but if it was a little bit more explainable to what happens to a resident, like some of them do have that, like if we have breaks in the annual waterline replacement and repair, that means boil orders, right? Or like what I was talking about before, like you will not be able to, like this on the back where you define that it affects more than one zone, okay, how many people is that? Right? And so if we could say it's 15,000 people who would have to go under boil orders if this does not work, or it would be, you know, possibly two zones that would have to not be able to use any water that came in, they would have to, you would have to bring in all of your water, or there would have to be water restrictions, nobody could water their lawn in these many zones, you know, like so that it can really make it real for people. That would help me because I think some of this is a little inside baseball, because you all know what it means, right? Like you can see the effects and you're like telling us about it, but I think being able to translate it for residents would help us, would help me, being able to talk to constituents about it.
We can absolutely do that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you translate that to a typical single-family bill, you can see here the two scenarios, the minimal CIP and the fully funded CIP, top and bottom. You can see on the left-hand side the existing fixed and volumetric or variable costs. So if you take a household that has 95,000 gallons of water use per year, and that's what we consider, and that's what we use as our typical single-family bill. You can see the existing 2025 total is about $719. Under the minimal scenario, that would go to $748.43 because the fixed fee is staying the same, which is an overall increase of 4.3%. If you then move down to the fully funded CIP, again, funding all of the projects, $719 becomes $796 essentially, which is a 10.3% increase. And if you look at that information compared with some historic and projected water rate increases, we show the two scenarios here. So I'll walk through this slide similar to one that we provided last year. On the bottom, you'll see 2010 through 2035, so we have a fair number of years of history plus some future forward years. On the left-hand side, you have the total annual revenue increase, so the combination of the fixed and variable increase. And then in slightly middle of the slide, you have that black line. So to the left of that black line are the historic increases, to the right are the projected increases, and a reminder that the projected increases will include debt service for projected debt, so keep that in mind, this is all in costs. You'll see that the minimal CIP, excuse me, the minimal funded CIP is right there with that 4.3% rate increase, and then it goes to five, and then it comes back down again and levels out. And then you'll see the fully funded CIP starts at about that 10.3% and then comes down further and then levels out.
Councilmember Rupert.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that using this kind of graph gives the impression to some that their rates are going to go up and spike and then the rates will come down. That's not what this is saying. This is saying the increases will diminish.
Yes.
But we're not ever getting a reduction in rate. That money is never coming back to your household budget. So I want to make sure people don't misunderstand this kind of a graph, because if you're not really careful interpreting it, you're going to misunderstand it.
Councilmember Davis.
So as, thank you for the slide and the previous one, it's a little concerning. I'm going to stop showering. Do you anticipate an increase in the use of the assistance programs? And if so, how are we going to fund that if somebody needs assistance? I mean, $800 is a healthy chunk of change.
That is something we're going to address in a later slide, I can speak to a little bit now. That is a question that we'll pose to you about what you might like to see for changes to our assistance programs, knowing that that's a concern that you've mentioned in the past. I will agree with Council Rupert, this is not cumulative, this is annual, individual years, and the next slide will show more of the impact overall. But we do have outreach to our customers about assistance programs, it's on the bills, we do put things on the city's website, and we are working to engage our customers to let them know that there are options for them if they need them.
I just want to make one other additional note on the previous slide. It gets really confusing with the minimal funded CIP and the fully funded, they look like they balance out in later years, but to other additional points, don't misunderstand that that just means we're not getting more work done. Eventually, further down the line, there's going to be another huge spike, so just noting that.
We are, and we are aware of that. I think if you recall, I think it might have been last year when we were showing you the one-pager that went down dramatically in spending annually for the water fund, and that was because we didn't have any current information for what's happening out in year number 10, year number nine. We're really good at years number one through five, one through six. Year number seven, eight, nine, 10, those get a little trickier, so we're doing some placeholders so that we don't inadvertently show you that there's nothing happening in out-years. We know there are things happening, it's just, yeah.
Perfect. All right, Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Maybe you have it in here, I didn't look that far, I was trying to figure out, so you said 95,000 gallons a year somebody would use, and that's based on your average or median of, I think I asked this question before, and...
It's not based on the average, it's based on what we consider to be a typical family of four who has an average-sized yard.
It's not based on the data of our actual households, or is it just a calculation from the engineering team?
It's actually a number that we've carried forward for a number of years. So we've been using 95,000 gallons, I believe, for several years as our comparison.
So I just checked, I Googled it. It says in Arvada, the water conservation report shows that the average single-family uses approximately 141,000 gallons.
That sounds high to me.
Well, I just looked at mine, and you guys don't want to know mine, you all know. I do it, I'm a thousand gallons a day almost, so, I mean, but I have a bunch of things going on in my house, apparently, but there is, I'm way out of the charts on this one, so I'm not going to use me, but that's what I'm trying to figure out, where'd you find Because it shows, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where we got the gallons. I just feel like 95 is just really low. That's why I think it's calculated, is it based on real billing? Like are we seeing numbers and are we finding the median?
Our average is likely less than 95,000 gallons, and I will go back and look at that. Your water use would be perhaps higher, depending on number of people, size of your yard, that kind of thing.
That's why if we just look at an address, regardless of number of people and yard and everything else, just take the address and look for medians or averages and see what those numbers are, and that should be the number we base. You know, we have the data, and I just pulled it off the meter, you know, I'm a smart meter, I guess, but that's why I don't look at it, because then I realize how much we're consuming sometimes, I thought we were doing better. But if we could, if we could just get that number, that would be better for me, because I just think 95,000 is unrealistic. I've tried to talk to other people and I can't find anyone that's that low, maybe something in here, I don't know if you look at yours, maybe, but maybe if you live in, you know, obviously apartment versus a townhouse versus, you know, there's different waters, so maybe more apartments, bring it down, I don't know.
Well, I use 35,000 gallons a year at my house.
A year? Well, you're also one, you have water rights.
So I irrigate with a well, but inside the house, we use 35,000 gallons a year.
Well, you, your yard is being, if you put that in there, I'm sure it'd be a lot more.
We can come back with some data that can help with that.
Just what the houses are just doing, the addresses are doing, don't worry about the number of people and their lards, what are they spending? That's what I'd like to see happening, because I think these increases are a lot higher in our projections than maybe what you're putting here. Say it is 141,000 gallons on an average a year, then we may not be doing these projections quite accurately, and there's no reason to have that large of an increase, if that makes sense. Okay, we'll find out more about that.
Let's move on.
Okay, to speak to the cumulative impacts of the projected rate increases and fee increases, we're looking at a chart here that shows historic and projected bi-monthly average typical single-family water bills. So we go back to 2021 and we go out through 2035, you'll see a combination of the fixed fee and the variable portion of the bill there, so that dark blue and the light blue. Again, the black line on the chart shows you where we are, and so as Jacqueline mentioned earlier, in 2021, we started implementing this roadmap of master plan projects. And as we move forward in time, if we were to simply use the fully funded CIP scenarios going forward, we would essentially double the bill in 2028. It would go from $74 in 2021 to about $145 in 2028. And that does include debt issues in 2028 and 2030 to supplement the replacement plant project that we're working on right now, and then other critical large-dollar projects. If I move forward to the next slide, we have a much shortened, more narrow comparison list for our neighbors, and I have a question for you at the end of the slide that we'll carry through for the next few funds. So we're looking at the typical single-family annual bill comparison with our, literally our closest neighbors. So we have Wheat Ridge, Westminster, Golden, Lakewood, and Broomfield. These are everybody's current 2025 rates and fees along with ours, and then the two scenarios going forward. So you can see what the boxes around the labels, where the three Arvada scenarios land, including our current 2025 scenario. So the question to this group is, would you like to see other comparison cities? We've had 10 or 12 that range across the Front Range, everywhere from Boulder and Lafayette down to Littleton, and we're happy to create a chart that has more or less.
I actually love this, these are going to be the most comparable cities in terms of geography, population, economics, and so I find this highly useful. Councilmember Marriott.
Just need to add Denver on there.
Yeah, I like that. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yeah, if it's based on the same consumption of water, that makes sense, you know, so some cities may have a different water conservation plan, so I don't know how you compare this, like is it the 95,000 gallons?
Yes.
Based by the rate? Okay, yeah, I'm good with this as well, I like it.
I like this, add Denver, and otherwise, I think it's a great list.
Okay.
So that ends the water fund. I'll move on to the wastewater fund unless there are more questions about water.
Actually, do we have unincorporated Jefferson County? Can we get them?
Unincorporated is served by either districts or they have wells.
Got it, no worries then.
Okay, so the wastewater fund, so we'll follow the exact same process as we did for the water fund. Again, we have a map, and that shows all of our red, orange, and yellow projects. I think there are two orange projects, they are the ones listed in that gray box, and those are condition assessments for the two different trunk lines that we have in the city. You'll see primarily the red dots are for the north trunk line and the central Ralston trunk line. North trunk line are the three dots on top, central Ralston are the three dots on the bottom part of the map. Again, a very similar, in fact, and identical practically description of what the one-pager definitions are for red, orange, and yellow, instead of the potential for long-term impacts to receiving water, these would be more along the lines of long-term impacts to delivering water to Metro. So the fact that our pipelines might be too... So the fact that our pipelines might be too small and bottlenecking or backing up into people's basements, which is not ideal for anybody. Rather than walking through all of these, again, I will say that, again, the impacts of not doing yellow, they become an orange. Orange becomes red, and red just becomes more significant of an impact. The one-pager for projects for the wastewater fund is a little bit shorter. And again, it is primarily dominated by the central Ralston and north trunk line projects. We have been working on those for a number of years and have a few years left to go. Again, as a reminder, those projects are a combination of repair and replacement of aging infrastructure, plus the ability to upsize those pipes to meet planned development. And so, as we move forward with one of the scenarios, I'll explain more about the impact of only doing a minimal CIP. Spoiler alert, that will impact planned development, but we'll get to that slide in a minute. So you'll see, again, the same format. You see 10 years' worth of projects. We don't have the consequences laid out on this one, so we'll make sure that we make that consistent in the next version, so you can see what the consequences are of not performing these projects. They are bottlenecks, backups, and not being able to meet planned development. And again, the same process is used for calculating rates and fees for the wastewater fund. We take the existing debt service, the projected debt service, our operating expenses, and all of our capital projects. We put those into the financial model, and then we come up with some scenarios to present to you. And they are labeled exactly the same way that we label the water scenarios. So we have a minimal CIP and a fully funded CIP. So again, two ends of the spectrum. In this case, a minimal CIP would only be funding debt service for existing debt, our operating expenses, and then the projects needed to spend our $15 million that we just issued last Wednesday. So that would be taking that list of projects down to the north trunk line two and three phases, and then the central Ralston trunk line, five and six phases, and eight and nine phases. So we would not be doing a handful of the wastewater projects that are currently shown as red. And again, the impact of not doing those projects is that we're slowing down planned development. We're also impacting our system as far as aging infrastructure goes with the potential for increased sanitary sewer backups. How that looks as far as numbers go, we again have the same format as the water slide. So you'll see the minimal scenario above the fully funded scenario. The minimal scenario shows that we would have a variable or volumetric rate increase of 8%. There would be no increase to the fixed fee, and that would be an overall 2026 revenue increase of 7%. There is no debt associated with this scenario. If we look at fully funding all of the projects, we would see a variable increase of 13%. Again, a fixed increase of 0%, which is an overall increase of 11.3%. And that does anticipate $55 million of debt in 2027 to complete those central Ralston and north trunk line projects. Bless you. So again, a scenario impact for a typical single-family bill. For this, because it's wastewater, we look at an average winter use of 4,000 gallons a month, and then we use that for all 12 months of the year. Wastewater isn't metered, so we use the average winter consumption. So you'll see the 2025 bill goes from $420.72 to $449 under the minimal scenario. That's the 7% increase overall. The fully funded goes from $420 to $467, so an 11.3% increase. And then the annual increase, not the cumulative increase, you can see here, the minimal and the fully funded CIP, to the right-hand side, projected increases. And with the left-hand side, the historic increases. I apologize, I only have the volumetric on there. So if you look at the minimal CIP, that should actually be the 7%, not 8%. If you look at the fully funded CIP, that should be 11.3%, not 13%.
Real quick, the minimal, just on the minimal, is when you have the out-years coming in, is that assuming no more new debt? Or still do the 27 debt?
Still do the 27 debt.
But just those two? So the one we just did last week?
And then in 2027.
So, and then there'd be no more? Like, no more projects, no more debt? So we can't really do any more projects?
Right.
It's only doing the minimal of, I guess, the criticals, or the two or three or four, or whatever it is?
If you look at the one-pager, you'll see that our program really drops off from the capital perspective in about 2029. That's the last year you see any NTL or CRT projects showing up.
And do you still think it's a five-year, year-over-year increase even after everything's built?
At this point, that's what we are anticipating. And Mary, do you wanna add to that?
I would like to jump in and say that we are smack dab in the middle of looking at condition assessment on the portions of CRT and NTL that we are not upsizing. And as I said, we're still working through that, so I can't say what that impact's going to be cost-wise. In addition, we are looking at updating the sanitary sewer master plan, and we're taking a really hard look south of Ralston Creek to our southern border, where we have a lot of redevelopment happening. Those lines are smaller, and we're not included in the last sanitary sewer master plan. And we do have a lot of concerns because they're smaller with all the redevelopment. So we don't have the information yet. I just don't want anyone to be shocked when I come back in a year with the results of that and say, ooh, we were right to have concerns.
So these, when we asked for these a few years ago, you're telling me there's more projects that we just haven't identified? So even if this list is done, we still have more to do?
I don't know, is the answer. I just wanna be clear that we are doing more work to make sure that the system will continue to function on the pieces and parts that were not evaluated in the last master plan.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mary, for clarifying that. So again, the impact to customers year-over-year, the historic and projected bimonthly average typical single-family wastewater bills going from 2021 to 2035. And again, these projected bimonthly bills are looking at the fully funded scenario. So the most expensive scenario that we would offer in these two tonight. So if you look at 2021, the bill was about $44. That would essentially double by 2029 and would become $91. And that is the impact of following our roadmap from our master plan implementation plans. And then similar to the water comparisons, we used the same neighbors, closest neighbors, to show what the impacts would be. Again, this is the 2025 current rates and fees compared to our projections. And so you can see where those land. It sounds like we'll keep this group of comparison cities going forward, plus Denver. And that concludes wastewater. And I'll move on if there are no more questions. Okay. So the stormwater fund, Jaclyn mentioned earlier in the presentation that we would like to bring back to you a workshop. It was requested during last year's cycle. We've had a lot of work going on in the stormwater fund, and so we are in the process of getting our arms around the projects that we need and the prioritization criteria that we use to lay those out for us over the short term, medium term, and long term. So a question for you that you can think about, we can ask you towards the end of the slide deck with the other questions, is would you like to see something about the stormwater fund in the short term? Or are you willing to wait until the team has finished up its comprehensive review? That would likely be end of the year, and looking realistically at your calendars and the agendas, might be spring of 2026. So we're open to doing either. It's your preference.
Oh, so you want it sooner?
It's been quite a while since I requested this. So I'd like to see something sooner than later, so, yeah. Spring of 2026, it'll be over a year since I've asked, so, thank you.
Okay. So a similar format to start off with, with the stormwater fund. Again, you'll see all the projects, a handful of them over the next 10 years. We are, of course, working on prioritizing and figuring out which ones we need to keep moving forward with. And a different version of the one-pager definitions of criticality than you have seen for water and sewer fund. So for our red, orange, and yellow projects, our red projects are highly critical, mostly from a level of service perspective, which is similar to the water and sewer funds. This is due primarily to reactive maintenance and residence calls. So we get a number of calls from our residents into our stormwater team. Hey, there's a sinkhole. Hey, there's flooding on my yard. The whole gamut of problems that they're seeing. And we put those through a matrix and figure out which ones are red, orange, and yellow. The orange ones don't have an immediate threat, but they're still important for us to meet level of service. And then the yellow ones have a minimal safety risk. Again, as with water and sewer funds, if you push yellow, it becomes orange eventually. Orange becomes red eventually. Red becomes even more significant of a problem. We are reviewing our projects and prioritization process, so we'll pull something together for you and bring something back for you. But just know that we're still working on this as well. We did provide you with a list of existing projects, and so you'll see them here. Again, a list of what we have going on and what we would like to keep moving forward with. So we have drainage improvement projects. That is the bucket account of what we have from our resident concerns. So when we put those through the matrix and we look at what residents are most concerned about, or what are concerns for our community, not just our residents calling in, but what we're seeing, those are the projects that we're looking to primarily fund. So instead of providing you two different scenarios for the stormwater fund, we came up with one that would provide the stormwater fund with enough money to maintain those drainage improvement projects and nothing else. So if we were to implement a 6% increase for the stormwater fund, that would provide us with about $600,000 a year to work on those drainage improvement projects. And those are running in the $700,000 to $900,000 a year. 600, we think, would be sufficient for the time being so that we could get our arms around an implementation process going forward. And that looks like a change from $67.50 in 2025 for a yard with 3,000 square feet of impervious surface area, which is how we measure for stormwater, to $71.55. And then looking at the impacts of that for our neighbors would be something we would bring back to you once we know what our out-years could look like, and then what we want to move forward with over the long term, the 10 years. Right now, we have a one-year, 6% can cover the most significant of the drainage improvement projects.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Does any of the urban drainage flood district funds come to any of these projects? Or are they just separate? So are we, are any of these qualified for that funding?
Yes, some of these projects are. We don't have the mile-high matching dollar amounts on these, but some of them do qualify and are eligible for, and are on the list.
Okay, so these dollar amounts here could be, there could be a contribution from urban drainage?
Yes.
Probably would like to know that. And then, you know, potential, I guess it depends if their board approves it and all of the other stuff. But, and then the one project that popped up, that gray one, Van Bibber, I know we did work on that. Maybe it's been a while, but I'm assuming you need to redo that drainage by, let's, baseball fields?
You are right that we have been doing work on it. And we have also paused work on that. I believe that is one of the mile-high flood district drainage. I'm looking at Claudia. That is a partnership project with the mile-high flood district. And when the teams were going through all the data, there were some errors in the data. So we are pausing that project while there is a review of the data needed to keep that project moving, which is why there is a TBD on that, because we're still in that process.
Okay, because I think we've looked at Van Bibber a couple times with the redevelopment of Ralston Road and the King Supers and the Kipling intersection. I know there's been a huge amount of improvements in culverts and stuff to support it, so I just was curious when that was back on the list. But I'd be curious what that results come out to be.
Councilmember Rupert.
Seeing the comparisons with our various neighbors on all of the projects, it occurs to me that we're not alone in facing new capital expenditures. I know Westy has a giant new treatment plant planned over along the Turnpike. So there, all of our neighbors are probably facing aging infrastructure, and they'll be facing debt expenditures in order to pay for them. So I guess it's useful for us to keep in mind and not continue to compare our future billing to their current billing.
If I move ahead one slide, and I can speak to what you're saying also. This is the slide where we compare ourselves with our closest neighbors for stormwater. And not everybody has a stormwater fund. I will note that while Wheat Ridge does not currently have one, they are currently undertaking a master plan. So that is on their horizon. I don't know whether they'll implement something, but it is something they are certainly looking at. And we'll keep those same comparison cities going forward. So if I jump to the next slide, and this is the last part of the rate and fee scenario considerations, and then we'll go back to talking to Jaclyn about affordability, this is a roll-up. So if we looked at the water, sewer, and stormwater bills rolled up compared with our neighbors, and again, to your point, Councilor, this is 2025 only. We don't know future. With our current 2025 and our two scenarios, this is how we stack up against our neighbors. So if you look at these, the 2025 current versus the fully funded scenario would be an increase of about $11.17 per month. So it's $134 annually increase.
Councilmember Ambrose.
I just wanted to make a comment about finding out what those average numbers are, because I looked up my water bill, and when I had six people living in my house, I had 66,000 gallons a year per use. And then now it's down to four people, so my annual is $40,000 a year. But I also tore out my lawn, replanted it with Xeric. That's just rainfall-only lawn. Granted, it has a lot of weeds, and it looks awful in the wintertime. But that's how I have a water bill that's half of the scenario that you present. And so I think, I mean, part of this is our aging infrastructure, but part of this is also being wise about our resources and what we use, and trying to change people's habits about conserving water overall. I think that cannot be missed.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah. So I think that it's critical that we fund our infrastructure, so that we don't have a Flint, Michigan. We don't run into a wall like Westminster where now we have to do it, and now we have an emergent situation, and we have to find everything now. It looks, this is a very well-thought-out plan to make sure that our infrastructure does last another 40 to 50 years. I think that once appearances are in the ground and forgotten about, we assume they're gonna last forever. But as you were just mentioning, that we have to replace some asbestos-lined concrete pipe. And that was like the thing back in the day, and now we're finding out that that is actually very dangerous to human health. And so what is, we really need to be cognizant that this is always gonna be dynamic and ongoing. And if you don't want water main breaks, which is water wasting, and then you don't want the sewer burping up into your neighborhood, we have to take lasting care of our infrastructure. And I can't, I cannot emphasize that enough. And putting things off, and we all have done it in our own homes, it's catastrophic. By the time that something breaks, you needed it yesterday, and the plumber now is gonna call, is going to charge you for an emergency fee to come out and fix things. So let's really remember, and not compare ourselves to our neighbors, because we don't know what their maintenance programs are. We don't know what they've been doing with the stuff that's in the ground. Let's think about me and mine right now so that we can make sure... Let's think about me and mine right now so that we can make sure that we're providing the best drinking water, that nobody is going to have the sewer back up into their home or their neighborhood, and that we don't have flooding because we've taken care of our stormwater system. So, you know, I'm always going to be on my platform for infrastructure, for the stuff you can't see. But if we have to pay it, pay for it in emergent situations, we're going to be paying $300,000, $300 million now rather than pacing it over the next 10 years.
So before I, oh, I was just going to say, before I turn it over to Jaclyn to move on with the affordability parts, we're going to ask you a series of questions at the end, so we have some direction on what to bring back to you in August. And one of those is going to be, what scenarios would you like to see? We've shown you some bookends, some minimal scenario, some fully funded scenario. We can come back with, what would it be just to fund the red projects, the red and orange projects? We've shown you red, orange, and yellow, so that's something we can certainly do, or anything in between. So keep that in the back of your mind. It'll come up in about 10 slides, and I'll turn it over to Jaclyn.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to continue our conversation that began earlier around utility bill affordability. And I just wanted to recognize how difficult this challenge is on balancing our regulatory and infrastructure reinvestment needs to provide consistent level of service that our customers expect and have come to expect at rates that are not beyond what our customers can, can handle. So we know that on average nationwide, our utilities bills, specifically water and wastewater, have raised, have been rising faster than Consumer Price Index. And certainly, that's true here in Nevada, as we've tried to fund our master plan implementation through these strategies. And so that's why, of course, we're taking an increased look on focus on affordability. Just want to emphasize, of course, it's the council's direction that determines an acceptable level of affordability for our community. And again, that's difficult, because we have to balance our competing utility, community, and other fiscal priorities. So our teams look at multiple ways to provide this information, to get that direction from you, and we hope to inform this through a couple of different lenses. We've talked about industry benchmarking, so what are some of the models used out there and the limitations as we look at case studies? We already talked about the use of our customer assistance programs. How can we understand better what barriers exist and how those are being utilized? And then we talked about conservation and how can we control demand management through water efficiency programs? And so we have options to change our programs through, through this lens. So first, I want to start with just a couple of example metrics that we can start to build into future presentations, future financial scenario modeling, what speaks to you in terms of the data you need to make your decisions. And I want to start with some EPA metrics, recognizing that there's some limitations with these models. At least it gives maybe a measure that we could trend over time for some of these commonly used guidelines. So we heard that affordability for all is also important, and this first median household income percentage is one metric that we could measure over time. So what's shown here is median household income and 2.5% of that going towards a water service and a wastewater service at 2%. So you see at our current fully funded scenario where we would land with that metric at 1.11%. Again, this isn't a perfect calculation. It's for our typical single-family home with irrigation practices at 95,000 gallons. We can certainly refine that moving forward based off of our actual bill data. Another model that can be examined is really putting this in the context of hours worked at minimum wage. And you'll see here, based off the calculations, that current fully funded scenario is at 6.23 hours per month relative to a metric of 7.36 hours per month, or 4.6% of a typical full-time hours worked at minimum wage. So again, not that these are actual definitions of affordability for our community, that's for the council to determine, but these could be measures that we could use over time to show the trends and the impacts of the decisions that we're making. We're also examining best practices through service affordability models, and the American Water Works Association does some annual benchmarking and has some publications and literature that we can follow. So this service affordability does use, if I look at the median nationwide for any agencies that responded to the American Water Works Benchmarking Survey, which isn't many, I'd say it's about 80 utilities across the U.S., but it's one published metric that we can bring back. You see that that's 1.43% of household income spent on water and wastewater services. So if we were to take that calculation and apply it to the fully funded scenario here today, you'll see we're at 1.11% of our median income. We're also examining other models that we want to bring back more information on. Again, we want to give you all the information around affordability and how we can best use industry benchmarks. And AWWA also looks at a matrixed approach of household affordability. So that really looks at like the lowest quintile or 25% income, looks at the prevalence of poverty in your own community. And when you start to really clue in on those factors, we can start to look at what is the household burden for providing a very basic water use. So this would be a minimal water use just for, for basic life. So that's something we can bring back in the future, too, or any other metrics that might be useful for your decision-making. So again, it's, it's pretty surprising to see that our customer assistance programs have such low use rates over time. You can see pre-pandemic, post-pandemic. We keep that in mind. And as we discussed earlier, we want to examine and address both real and perceived barriers that may exist and work towards improving those. We've previously discussed ideas around roundup options, and we'll continue to look at some other case studies that might be effective that we can bring forward to enhance customer assistance programs. And of course, we'll provide all the information about administration requirements, legal considerations, the technical data, whatever you need to make some of those decisions around revenue impacts balanced with assistance programs. Ultimately, we will be looking for your direction on whether you have ideas that you'd like us to consider, changes to, for example, hardship credits amounts, whether we want to further invest in some of our other water use management tools.
Jaclyn, for hardship credits, do we ask for proof of income or anything like that?
Debbie, can I have you weigh in on what our process looks like there?
It depends on the hardship. So if I'm claiming it's a financial hardship, yeah, we would want some type of proof or explanation.
Okay. Mayor Proton Mormon.
And so to better understand these options here on the table, the $100 hardship credit, that's a one-time thing. So if a customer uses that, they can't come back and use that again. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So what then is their option after that? How does that kind of look if they, they come in, they say, I can't pay my bill, you give me a $100 hardship credit, okay, this, this month that works. Next month, they come back and say, okay, I'm having trouble again. What then happens?
Payment plans are other options at this point. But again, that's where we're seeking direction from you. If we want to increase that amount, make that a one-time annual or a different type of policy direction around how we apply those credits, we could certainly look within existing funds or stand up additional funds to help increase the value of that credit.
And I'm sure we've asked this before, so I apologize for asking again, but what do we, you know, when we look at other communities, what are, you know, are they using similar things, or is it something that they're doing differently? What, what are the lessons learned with that?
We have done that work to compare to other communities. We don't have it in tonight's presentation, but I'd be happy to bring that, that back in the next workshop.
That may be helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
The equalization plans, those, were those locked in, and then we just, and then, oh, no. So in, your number is as of May of 2025. Okay, I was, I was getting confused there. I do hear more people asking about the equalization plan, so it, it's evident that some have increased. I'm curious, has that been successful? It's probably good for cash flow, but is that an option?
I mean, predictability of bills, I think, is a win for all. And so Debbie, maybe you can describe a little bit about the process that we use for setting that amount and some of the benefits we've seen.
So what we do is go over the last six bills, depending upon when they want to sign up for the program. So they could sign up in December, it could be June, and then they reconcile once per year. And if their balance is plus or minus $50, they either owe, or we send them a refund.
On that plan, just kind of like what Excel, I think, has a similar plan?
Yes.
Okay. And talk about these other programs, and I know we're talking about marketing. Do we, in general, do we get a lot of questions around it, and just people just don't sign up? Are we getting traction? Are we getting phone calls? Are we getting hits to the website? Are we tracking those kind of, like, people are teasing out the inquiry, but they're not really signing up yet?
Again, they don't really have a penalty that's enforced except for a lien, which can lag for an entire year. So it's not super important to them.
So when you start turning, turning off water, yeah, then you'll see a change.
Yes.
Okay.
But to your point, I think we can do some additional data gathering, as you mentioned earlier, to inform what's happening there, also potentially engagement with our customers to really understand, is it a perceived barrier because of the worth of the credit, or just to really understand that decision-making?
Well, and just, I'm not going to pick at this issue, but just keep in mind that, you know, when we talk about fees and what they cover, we got to be very careful when they have six, seven, eight metro districts that have paid for infrastructure that is less than 10 years old. I'm not saying it needs to be separate or anything, but just be cautiously aware that there is organizations, the taxpayers that are paying for infrastructure that is not old, that is used to deliver the water, sewer, and so forth, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I think in order to give you direction on these programs, I appreciate knowing the usage, but I'd also like to know, like, what's the availability? Like, are we having more requests than we have funds available? Which ones seem to be the most popular, popularly utilized? Because I, you know, like, if, if you're like, nobody uses these hardship credits, and we have $5,000 budgeted for that every year, then I'd be like, okay, maybe not expand that program, right? Or maybe expand that program and get people to use that one. You know, like, I kind of need to know, how do you budget a line item for the payment for, for some of these?
We can definitely bring you that information in terms of specific budget items and whether we want to increase those line items. As you mentioned, the, the interest and participation rates, we can bring back more information. We do a lot of advertising connection to try and draw people to the programs, but of the total number of accounts in our system, I don't know that I have the causation data to tell you why the numbers have remained relatively steady over the last five years.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rupert.
I'm wondering if it's a benefit to our system for us to have more people use the equalization plans, or does it not matter to us so much because we have the working capital to ride whatever out? So that's question one.
I don't, I don't have that answer as to how that benefits our financial model, but I could certainly bring back that.
If it's a benefit to us as a system, it seems to me that we ought to market it better, or we ought to drive it and see if we can get more people engaged in it. And then along with that, it seems to me that if we can create more automated payment options, that would also reduce the people forgetting to pay their bills. It could, it could save Mr. Pfeiffer all kinds of money. And $10 every cycle. But we could actually improve people's pocketbooks by helping them pay on a regular basis on an equalized plan, and, and everybody could potentially win. I'm not saying these are answers, but I'm saying that they're worth considering.
Thank you. Well, to lean into a little bit more around the water use management, I wanted to present an update here as of May as to our status of smart meter installation. So some of us are lucky enough to be able to pull out our phones during today's discussion and compare our annual usage year over year based off of how many members were in our household and what our irrigation practices were at that time. And that's really valuable information to help us make smart choices about how we want to use our water. So the takeaway here, and I apologize, the graphic is small, is that this project is well underway. We're really excited. 61% of our meters have been replaced. We're well on track to continuing that work for project completion in 2027. This will only be a really excellent tool for our customers, but allow and support perhaps a future shift towards a monthly billing type option down the road.
Sorry, not to be silly, but how do you get to 100.1, 100.2%? It cycles eight, cycle seven. Do you want to speak to that? I'm just curious.
I had the same question. It's because we had compound meters, so they might have had two dials in there, and we moved to a single meter. So it, yeah, how do you do more than 100%?
I was like, are we helping out the unincorporated?
No.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I'm glad you asked that question. Thank you. You know, there's also other programs that we can increase our participation in, and so this just shows a dashboard status report of 2025 to date, or is this 2024 data? 2025 data to date around participation in some of our Resource Central programs, Garden in Box, Lawn Replacement, Slow the Flow. Certainly, this is another option that we could direct further resources to you to help customers better manage their water conservation. So next steps, and I'm hoping to just recap some of the things we heard and hear additional feedback from you. We're coming back in August, August, August 12th, and we want to talk a little bit about what we heard, refine the scenarios closer to what you want to see, continue discussion on affordability and programs, and get your final direction on what scenarios you want us to move forward with. Overall, we'll have time in a September workshop, if needed, to iron out, again, further direction on rates and fees, and in October, have first reading and public hearing on this item. So scenarios to return with, I think I heard clearly we want to see data on our actual water consumption trends, median use. I think it was important to use the 95,000 gallon for transparency for historical comparison, but we can certainly, as we did last year with the refined scenario, bring back those impacts across a range of water use or a customer type. So I should have noted it in the affordability slides. We polled an actual customer accounts that have been working with our utility services team on assistance programs, and we use their water usage in, in bill amounts in those calculations, so we can do more of that customer type information and bring that to you as well versus just the 95,000 gallons.
That, that would be fabulous, Jaclyn, because obviously, a townhome user, an apartment user would be very different. And I'd even be curious in the East versus West, because a lot of the new development, Mr. Pfeifer's, you know, usage notwithstanding, they, you have smaller yards out West than we do in the East side. And so I would be curious if there's a dichotomy there between the older plots that have larger yards versus the West where they're smaller.
Thank you. I also heard clear direction on bringing back more information very soon on the stormwater, clarifying what projects, what work and priorities, as well as fundamental operations of the stormwater fund, so we'll be doing that. And also bringing back additional information on the, the consequences and impacts to criticality, and having further discussion with you on the level of service. So this is a values conversation around comfort with risk, and, you know, really, how do we strike that balance between affordability and proactive investment in our systems versus, as Councilmember Davis mentioned, the increased cost of emergency reactions to some of our system needs. So we'll definitely bring back more information on that. So with that, I'll stop talking so I can listen.
Councilmember Marriott, you have your light on.
Yeah, so the one thing I didn't, that we talked about before last year and earlier this year, that I didn't see in any of this presentation at all, and may be coming, is talking about pumped zones for, for water supply. I think that's something that needs to be part of this conversation. I mean, it's absolutely clear, some of the people in the city are subsidizing some other people in the city for their, for their cost of their water, and we ought to at least have a transparent conversation about that and make a, council should make a decision on that and, you know, record where they stand on that. That's the first one. The second one is, you know, we have some pumped sewer as well, wastewater as well, where we have lift stations, and I don't know enough about that to know whether that's something we should do or not. I think the last time we talked, I had asked for some kind of a, of just an assessment of that, you know, where, where those are, how many they are, what the relative cost of those is, you know, that, that type of thing, to see if that should be in the conversation or not. I think, I think over time, we've learned enough that the, the water needs to be in the conversation, has to be in the conversation. The wastewater may need to be or may not need to be, depending on the information you bring us. So that's the thing that was missing here. My hope is that that will be in this next workshop we see, or certainly the one where we start deciding on rates. I'll be very averse to voting for water rates that don't include a pump- I'll be very averse to voting for water rates that don't include a pumped zone. Again, as the price of, of people's water bills goes up significantly higher, you know, the, the older, farther eastern areas subsidizing the newer western areas doesn't seem appropriate to me, and I probably am not willing to tolerate that going forward. So I just want to make sure that somewhere along the series of workshops, that that piece is in the conversation.
Thank you for that. I meant to hit that in the intro, and I would love to hear any additional feedback for how we can bring forward that information in these financial scenarios. We do have a task scoped out to examine that a little bit further, and I'd love to hear that direction.
Councilmember Pfeiffer, you wish to comment?
I absolutely disagree with that, because if that's the case, bring all the debt that JCMD and all the metro districts have paid for that infrastructure and those pumps. It's almost $1 billion. There is no reason that those citizens should have a special charge when they're already paying 55 mils on debt recovery that paid for that infrastructure to be installed. You know, I don't think that there should be anything special around that. You know, and we as a city decided to put people at a higher elevation. We zoned it, we allowed it. That's part of the business of doing, part of the cost of doing business. But at the end, at the, at the end of the day, the debt is on the shoulders of the people. He's saying pumped zones is West Arvada. And those pumped zones, those were all paid by the metro districts, all that infrastructure. So if we want to go tit for tat, I have a problem with some of these fees completely, because I know the billion dollars that the metro districts have paid for the infrastructure that's out there that are still being paid for the next 30 years. So I think it's double charging. So not only saying, well, it's pumped, but then, oh, by the way, you did pay for that pump to get installed, but we're going to charge you just because that pump exists. I'm not on fan. So that won't be a great conversation when you have to bring that in front of us. Because I, I could tell you right now, West Arvada, that's not fair to this organization that has paid or that part of the, the city that has paid for that infrastructure. So. It won't, it won't be very good. But, but while I have the mic, can I just wrap up for her as well? Mayor? I just want to say thank you for doing all this. It's a long night. I wish we didn't do it so many times a year, but this is good, because we rehashed a few things. Hopefully, the cheese doesn't move too often on you and your team, but it probably will. Just bear with us. The more you represent to us, the more things slightly might move in the conversation. But it, it does need to be thoughtful. My, I'll tell you, my, my gut says it is the right thing to invest in it, but I also fear the out years of what the consumer, the household's going to have to pay. You know, it's just, it worries me, because, you know, if you look at the trend of where we were with bonding and the increases year over year, and then all of a sudden, there's this huge ones over the last two or three, and then maybe for the out years, these huge expenses. I think it's just, it's just hard to swallow that, those huge hits. I don't disagree that they're critical, but what I would ask the team is, not everything can be critical. And so we really need to put a threshold of what is, I know you have it on the back of your, of what the engineering team has decided as critical, but we also need to really like, boiling orders, I think, is critical, you know, that, that makes it. But a study can maybe need more information, you know? Does it really become critical? I know it's a, it's a linchpin maybe into the next step of a critical project, but is, is it, and does it need to be highlighted that way? So hopefully, next time we come back or in the future, could we just be, can kind of consider the, the use of critical, because everything looks red, and everything's an emergency, and everything's a priority, and we get nothing done. So it would be nice if we had like three, four, five major projects, knock them out of the park, get to the next three, four, five, knock them out of the park, and kind of prioritize them where they're bite-sized, not like, oh, the sky's falling, you know, all these scary colors, which I know they need to be done, but it just seems sometimes a little overwhelming.
Thank you for that. The team has been thinking about additional strategies to prioritize projects, and we can do more ranking and provide more information like that to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, Councilmember Rupert.
Thank you. One of the things I'd like to have on the list for future discussion is our working capital requirement. So in the enterprise funds, it's working capital. It's really actually a mix of working capital and reserves. And our, by policy currently, it's 25%. I, I would argue that that's probably extravagantly risk averse, but maybe I am wrong. So I'd like to know what the rationale is for having a 25% reserve for these funds? What are the scenarios that people can imagine that we're going to actually dip into those 25% reserves? And how long are they going to last? And in the event we discover that maybe 25% is an unnecessarily high number and we're hoarding money, what projects can we knock off our capital list to moderate some of these projects? Because we're actually, if we knock some of these things off, we're reducing the risk to the system. So that's part of the conversation I'd like to have.
Thank you. We can bring that.
Thanks.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, and thanks again to the team for putting this together. I just want to make sure and caution council that putting stuff off is, is, it's much more expensive. We get to the place where our roads are today, because we put things off. We put off stuff that you can't see, and all of a sudden, we have a catastrophe underground and neighborhoods now cannot flush their toilets or wash their bodies. So we really have to think about putting things off and putting things off. And again, putting it in a personal perspective, when you put things off, on your vehicle, for example, oil changes, then all of a sudden, your engine seizes and you're like, well, crap, I could have spent that X number of dollars to get my oil changed, but I put it off, and now I'm getting a new engine. So I really want to caution us, we were talking about pumps that hadn't had love per se for 40 years. I think that everybody sitting up here brushes their teeth every day. We put in the work to do, to get things right. And I think that we owe it to our residents, our ratepayers, our businesses to make sure that we have some of the best infrastructure on the front range and that we're not nickel-and-diming ourselves to the point where someday we're going to be having to find $300 million to fix something that is emergent. So I just want to leave that with council and with the public, that this is something that's not sexy. You don't see it, but it's of vital importance.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and the information. I know we complain about it, but I know we also ask a lot of questions and want more information all the time, so, you know. And I do want to point out that this is a lot on a 10-year span of spending $411 million, but that I appreciate how it is broken out into bite-sized chunks of like, okay, you know, three years from now, we are going to do the Water Resources Infrastructure Master Plan if we have it fully funded. We're not spending that much this year. And so that you can see, like, this year, it's $41 million, 2027, it's $101 million, 2028, it's $81 million, 2984, and then there's a sudden drop to $18 million and 31. What I am interested in is the Ralston Plant, that is looking at that 36, 37, and replacing that and how that's going to, you know, we'll, we'll have, looks like, four years of $25 million, $2 million, $4 million, and then are we going to spike right back up into the $80 millions again, $100 millions to be able to afford to replace the Ralston Plant?
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you again for this presentation, and it has been a long night, but I appreciate all the work your team has put into and also taking all of our questions. That's been a big part of the conversation. I, I, I think to answer your question about what to come back to with us, I think, and I would be interested in, and I think you said this, of if there's a different, if you're looking at other ways to prioritize projects, I'd be interested in seeing what those other ways are and what's the outcomes of that. Because I just, I felt like some of the conversation tonight led me to believe, and maybe inaccurately, that there are some projects in the yellow, the orange, that we can wait on, and that's okay. And we're not going to have to, you know, have serious issues and risks come up where we have to, you know, have orders about boiling water, right? So, so I would be interested in just seeing what that new assessment may look like and if there is an opportunity to adjust our modeling and figuring out what our new pricing would be, our new scenario with, you know, some of these yellow and maybe orange projects not being included now and what that impact would be. So I would be interested in looking at that, because I think, you know, we, we have this conversation. I've been on council four years, and every year, we have this conversation, and it's a hard one, right? Where we have to balance, to Sharon's point, to Councilmember Davis's point, that we, we don't want to be in a situation where down the road, we have a huge problem, and then we have to come up with all the money to fix it, and then we're going to ratepayers and saying, we're going to spike up your rates. We don't want to be in that situation, for sure. So we need to be very thoughtful and strategic in planning long-term, and that's what we've been doing, and your team has been awesome at that. So I think it's just continually sharpening our pencils and fine-tuning this process with us. And so we're, we're here to do the work with you and be along that journey. And so I guess that's my ask, is just to keep, keep fine-tuning that some more and seeing what is that middle scenario that you didn't present tonight that takes away some of those projects that aren't as prior, you know, high priority and keeps the really high priority ones, so that we don't run into trouble. And, and maybe, maybe that's what you already presented, but just to go back and check it again.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yeah, I agree with what, what Councilmember Mormon just said and Councilmember Davis as well. The balance also, I was realizing, you know, kind of comparing it to Streets. Can our, you know, I look at 13, 13 of these projects a year. Are you, are you going to be working on 13 to 15 projects a year, and is that sustainable? Because like, I can give $40 million, though I can't, but let's just pretend we can give $40 million to Streets. There's no way you can do that much. There's no capacity to do that, and I don't think there's any tolerance. I'll tell you, the Sheridan Road has been, I get phone calls over Sheridan Road from people in Westminster about it that I know, and, yeah, it's kind of crazy, actually, because I finally went and drove it. It's an amazing project, actually, but do we have that bandwidth? So let's keep that in mind. When you put these out here, they work for the numbers and maybe your cash flow, but, I mean, we shouldn't hire 15 contractors to project manage 15 projects. That's a waste of money. We need to look at what's within our capacity and what can we sustain without tearing up our whole city? And how does this work? So I keep that in mind as well. And then the last thing I would, I would say is, you know, this council needs also, we need to remember our core business and our, the things we need to do. We have a lot of competing projects. We've got streets, we've got sidewalks, we've got underground infrastructure. We, you know, luckily, the law enforcement side of it's pretty well taken care of, but we just have so many competing projects and priorities that we don't have an unlimited amount of money. So we just got to make sure we're thoughtful, and every time we are talking about spending money, you know, and this is granted, this is the users' money that will help fund this, but I think there's a middle ground that we can do here, but also, let's keep in mind, let's be thoughtful about how we, how we look at the financials of all these things. So.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Thank you. So I echo the thoughts of my colleagues. Fundamentally, I think we have to do the work. These are cyclical patterns, and it's really nice when you're in the 35 years in between when big investments are being made. We're just where previous councils from 1985 were at. It just happens to be this time in this place. And so we have to make the hard decisions, and so I agree with funding our system if there are savings or projects that can wait. But what I don't want to do is, is, okay, we can push this off, we can push this off, and we see yellow turn to orange turn to red. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of maintenance and fixing it on the back end. So I appreciate the look at this as a systemic whole, what touches what, and I appreciate all the hard work that went into preparing this. You and your team did a great, great job. In particular, I'll echo Councilmember Ambrose's point about the sort of, what are the ramifications of this? Do we go on boil notices? Mary, you were awesome tonight at that, thank you, about just really translating to non-technical terms for folks like us, about what does this actually mean? Oh, we can't get water to our treatment facility? That's probably a bad thing. So that's going to be a problem. So thank you for that. That kind of layman's really helps us, and it does help us go around to our constituents then and be able to say, this is why this is so important. We have to be able to get water to our treatment facility. Otherwise, no water. So thank you so much for that, for all the hard work tonight. I will close the workshop. If there's no additional comments, I see no light, so I'm going to close the workshop and open it for council comments.
Council reports, Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you. I just had a couple items this evening. One, I want to express my gratitude to council for letting me be away for two weeks. I was in Ireland and Scotland on a singing tour with the Arvada United Methodist Church. And we, that was also a combined tour with First Congregational Church of Greeley. And so we developed some wonderful friendships with, with those folks, but also I feel like we were kind of unofficial ambassadors of the city of Arvada. And so that was really a neat experience to develop some friendships with the communities over in Ireland and Scotland where we sang. We shared a message of social justice, hope, peace and love, and sang some really fun spirituals like All My Trials and God's Got the Whole World, and even did a really cool song that put John Lewis's words to music called Good Trouble. So it was, it was just a really, a great experience. And so again, thank you for letting me be away to do that. And, and then my second comment is in relation to a Colorado legend. Hazel Miller celebrated her 72nd birthday last night, and I had the opportunity to go to that birthday party at the Arvada Elks. She's a resident of Arvada, so she is one of our, I think, crown jewels that we may not celebrate enough, and it was fun to celebrate with her and our community there at the Arvada Elks. So I wanted to call that out. And then the final thing is, I hope everyone has a wonderful Fourth of July this coming Friday. Spend time with your family and friends and be safe. And, and also, if you do need to report illegal fireworks, please do that to our police. We want to keep on that, and we've got a new ordinance that, you know, we want to make sure is enforced. So please help us do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Quickly, I realize I forgot the five-minute public comment. Is there anyone in chambers, for the three folks left? Is there anyone in chambers who would like to give comment at the five-minute public? Okay, no. I'm seeing heads shaking. Excellent. So back to council reports, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Well, I just spent a wonderful four days in Frankenridge at the Colorado Municipal League Conference. Holy moly, we have a group of fantastic leaders across the state. I was able to talk to folks from Brush Center, Colorado, anybody heard of it? Lake City, Grand Junction, all the big ones were there too. But it was really interesting to learn that we have the same issues, we just have different logos. So it was really nice to get to talk to people and support. One of our attorneys who was speaking at one of the legal sessions, so that was really great. And right now, I just want to say that I'm very proud to represent the large cities as Arvada representative to the Colorado Municipal League Executive Board. And I'm very thankful for the support of my colleagues to allow me to have that time and put my attention there, and I will be representing the city and you at the Colorado Municipal League. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, congratulations to Councilmember Davis on winning the election to the CML Board and representing us. And I wanted to remind folks that during the summer, I am not having my Fourth Friday meetups, but you can sign up for my newsletter by emailing me at sambrose@arvada.org. I send that out every week about council business, and people seem to be enjoying it, so.
Yeah, and down the line, Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Did you call on me? Oh, I was just telling Congressman, I'm already promoting you. I'm already promoting you to Congress. To Shawna, that I do read her newsletter, actually. A couple of things. One, just shout out to Ryan Stevenson, our vibrant community's spent the day with me or the morning, and we have two more planned to do a walking of the trails and the systems that we have out there and kind of the views of the residents. And he really highlighted it, and I don't know why it happened that day. It seemed like it was more than normal, but there was a lot of people outside riding bikes, walking dogs, you know, Friday morning, again, it's a Friday, but it was more than maybe the rest of the city would see. And we talked about, you know, philosophical things, like how can we have some of the... And we talked about, you know, philosophical things like how can we have some of the nice amenities out east and the southeast part, so of the city and, you know, kind of the perseverance to push through those kind of quality of life and sense of community throughout the city? Because he was like, it's just a whole different world up into the west side. But, you know, we walked on, we walked through all the metro districts and which parks that they maintain and not maintain, which we went to Whisper Creek. As you know, they had to stop maintaining their parks, and you can see the difference, but they're going to get back on track, I think. But at the end of the day, I told him, he didn't know this, but I, I'm going to apply to work for parks. That's what I want to do. I said, I have a CDL. I know you want them to plow, so it works out well. I can do this. And then they're all in here, and I got excited. I was like, oh, these are going to be all my peers one day, you know? So I was going to drop the mic and say, I'm done. I got to give a one-year notice before I can join the city and just, I just want to mow and participate. But you know what, the way, what you realize is, and it doesn't matter what park, and you all can say it no matter what in the city, the parks are beautiful. The parks are maintained, and there's a sense of pride, and you want to be part of the team. So I just wanted to highlight, it was kind of refreshing to be with Ryan on Friday and then have the whole team here, or most of the team here to talk about and celebrate them. The other thing I want to highlight is, talking about metro districts, I had a meeting that was highlighted from a former city manager, and I just want to highlight our city attorney for making me look good. Because I wouldn't have been able to do that if she didn't quickly throw that together right before I went to Barbados, and then I had to jump in, and then apparently I knocked it out of the park. But that was because of her. She prepped it. It was simple. It had brevity. It had kiss. It was awesome. For an attorney, it was awesome. Because if I charge you, if I charge you per word, it would have been damn cheap. So, but it was really well put together, so I want to shout out for your help on that. Yeah, and, and, you know, the staff, overall, you all do a great job. Things, I didn't want to go through 44 pages tonight, Linda knows this, but I know we have to go through it. Maybe we can get a little bit brevity mixed in the future ones, but still address the questions that are up here. But you all do a great job. That project on Sheridan is massive craziness. I didn't, I expected more complaints. I just got a few, and I went and drove it, and I didn't realize how big of a project that, that really is. So congrats on, on that. I mean, that is monumental for us. Because it isn't sexy, as Sharon would say. But it's disruptive. It is, but disruptive, but good job. So overall, staff seems to be, you know, summer, hitting it all off and doing really well at all levels. And, you know, let's keep the momentum going because we're on the right trajectory. So good job, everybody, tonight. So thank you.
All right. Echo all the comments of my colleagues. CML was absolutely fantastic, and I enjoyed seeing all my colleagues there. And then in addition, I want to remind everyone that it is Fourth of July week. On Friday is the big holiday. This is the nation's 249th and the 149th of the state of Colorado, which should probably indicate to you that next year is going to be quite a massive celebration. We are forming a committee here at the city in order, so to help plan festivities for the nation's 250th, the state's 150th, and how we're honoring that here in Arvada. So if you're interested in being a part of that, just shoot me an email, and I'll get you in contact with the property team, proper team as we're putting that together. And otherwise, I think that's about it. Ms. Haley? Oh, and don't do the fireworks, people. I know you're still gonna, but I have to say, come on now. Wildfires, this is Colorado. Don't do the illegal fireworks. Please go see the legal ones at Stanger Lutz. They're nicer than what you can buy, anyway. Ms. Haley?
Thank you, mayor. We do have another set of workshops next week. We'll be discussing micro mobility as well as the transportation system plan, so look forward to that next week. Thank you.
Ms. Morris?
Nothing for me, Your Honor.
All right, we stand adjourned.